Good afternoon. I'd like to ask the interpreter currently on the Spanish channel to commence interpretation of the meeting. For those just joining the meeting, live interpretation in Spanish is available. And members of the public or staff wishing to listen in Spanish can join the Spanish channel by clicking on the interpretation icon in the Zoom toolbar. It looks like a globe. If you are on your cellphone or tablet, locate the three dots, tap them lightly, and put a check mark on your preferred language. Click Done to activate and begin the interpretation. Once you join the Spanish channel, we recommend you shut off the main audio so you only hear the Spanish interpretation. Isidro, will you -- sorry, Claudia, will you please restate this in Spanish?
Yes. Buenas tardes a todos. Bienvenidos. Los servicios de interpretación en español van a estar disponibles de una manera simultánea para la junta del día de hoy. Para tener acceso a este servicio, por favor, que fijarse en la parte inferior de su pantalla. Ustedes van a notar un símbolo del globo terráqueo, un símbolo de mundo. Por favor, hacer un clic en ese icono y se les va a proporcionar la opción de elegir ya sea el idioma de español o inglés. Por favor, de elegir el idioma de español inmediatamente pueden disfrutar de esta junta de una manera simultánea. Ahora, si tienen acceso a esta junta por su celular, tableta, o iPad, ustedes pueden localizar tres puntos ya sea en la parte superior o inferior de su pantalla a mano derecha. Abajo de esos tres puntos, ustedes van a notar una palabra que dice más o more. Por favor, de hacer otro clic, se les va a lanzar el globo terráqueo, otro clic, y por favor, de elegir el idioma de español. También, ya que lo hagan, por favor, de hacer un clic donde dice terminar o done. Eso va a ser importante para que ustedes puedan escuchar inmediatamente la junta. Muchísimas gracias. Estamos a sus órdenes. Thank you very much. Back to you.
Hello, everyone. For those of you who did not get enough city council discussion last week, we are back. The time is 4:02. We'll call this meeting to order. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Rogers. President -- Councilmember Ocrepki.
Here.
Councilmember McDonald.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming. Councilmember Benwellows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Alvarez.
Present.
Mayor Stapp.
Here.
Let the record show that all councilmembers are present with the exception of Councilmember Fleming.
Thank you. And we get to jump right ahead to item number seven, our proclamations and presentations for the week. We'll turn it over to Councilmember McDonald for our proclamation on National Public Works Week.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to read this proclamation tonight. Whereas public works are integral to the daily lives of our citizen and whereas public works professionals maintain the infrastructure, facilities, and services that are critical to the sustainability, resilience, and health of our community, enhancing the well-being of Santa Rosa's residents by managing 516-mile roadway network, 1,085 acres of park and open space, 73 acres of roadway landscaping, 108 city-owned buildings, 320 miles of storm drain, 1,200 miles of water and sewer pipes, and the wastewater treatment plant. And whereas these vital services would not be possible without the dedication and hard work of public works professionals, engineers, operators, technicians, and across all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for maintaining, improving, designing, and safeguarding our community's infrastructure, transportation system, water and sewer networks, parks, public buildings, and other essential services. And whereas public works personnel work daily under challenging conditions to ensure the safety of all people while performing the critical tasks of maintaining and enhancing our infrastructure. And whereas it is essential for the citizens, leaders, and future generations of Santa Rosa to understand and appreciate the importance of public works and the role these programs play in our community. And whereas 2025 marks the 65th anniversary of National Public Works Week, now therefore be it resolved, Mark Stapp, the mayor of the city of Santa Rosa, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim May 18 through 24, 2025, as National Public Works Week.
Glad to see so many of our team here. Dan, are you kicking it off?
Yeah, I'm gonna just say a few words to accept the proclamation before our recipients come down. Thank you very much, Councilmember McDonald and Council for this recognition. Public works is the backbone of our community. It does a lot of the stuff that goes without any glory. And it's many departments working together. Parks, Water, Transportation, Public Works, and a number of others too who contribute to service mentality that helps our community keep running. You know, from our street conditions and stormwater, storm drains, to our engineering teams and parks maintenance and parks planning staff. A lot goes into this that goes unseen. And to have a week like this where we're able to recognize our teams, the camaraderie across the departments and the services that they provide to the citizens is really appreciated. So we thank you for that. I also want to note that, you know, there were a lot of discussions recently and particularly last week's council meeting about different services. The stuff that these teams do is not only important to the city, but it costs money to do. And so we recognize that we're working as hard as we can to do as much as we can with the resources that we have, but we have challenges just like everybody else. And we're working through those. But really appreciate the recognition and looking forward to see these guys come down and get a picture with you and get their recognition. Thank you again, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Director Hennessy. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to say a few words?
Oh, Mayor, pardon me. Our communications office will kill me if I don't mention the Public Works Week Festival, the City Works Festival at the Santa Rosa Market on Wednesday, May 21st, starting at 5 through 8:30 p.m. There will be a scavenger hunt, a number of different pieces of equipment down for kids and adults to hang out and see and see exactly what it is that we do and how we do it.
Oh, thanks for mentioning that. So a number of us were there last year. That is a great night for families. So come if you can make it. And with that, are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak, say something complimentary about Santa Rosa Public Works? And there are many things to say. Seeing none, let's do a photo op. Dan, if you can bring yourself and the team down, let's take a picture. All right. Our next item, number 7.2, has to be rightfully counted among the highlights for Santa Rosa this year. It has made the paper on a number of occasions. I think we have some community members here as well to celebrate. And without further ado, I would like to turn it over. I would like -- we would like to read the presentation or we'd like to rather do the presentation from the California Massage Therapy Council. So and we have Emus and then Mark Dixon here to present an award to Santa Rosa as the 2025 City of the Year. Do we want to do any remarks first before doing the -- yeah, come down to the main table. And if you're willing, say a few things about the journey that's led us to this moment.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Mark Dixon, chairman of California Massage Therapy Council. And almost nothing else. I came up to present this award to the city, to the citizens, the council, the police department, the business owners, massage professionals, the massage school in town, all collaborated and all came together to do what doesn't often happen between the massage community and the government. For 16 years, CMTC's experts in government relations, law and code enforcement, communications, schools, supervision have been supporting cities and counties who are interested in protecting the public. And that includes the therapists who provide the massage and the clients who receive it to protect them so that they can work and give and receive massage in a safe setting. Well, once in a while, the citizens, in this case, led and organized and inspired by Curtis Bennett, who couldn't be here tonight. The citizens came together about a year ago, February. It happened to have been on Valentine's Night. Sixty or 70 people, including yourself, Mr. Mayor, and Police Chief Craigan, showed up and got the attention of city council, who got the attention of law enforcement, who collaborated with the businesses, the school in town, with the therapists and the establishments to produce an ordinance that has created a good beginning, a good beginning for helping to protect the public and uplift the profession and keep it a safe place to practice and receive massage in Santa Rosa. So it was a big enough deal for us to designate Santa Rosa as the City of the Year because it's the result of the collaboration and communication between a lot of entities. It doesn't often happen. It was a perfect storm of collaboration. So here we are. We were up here about a month ago to see the ordinance voted in. And we went right to a board meeting. And I said, let's recognize the citizens, the all of the stakeholders in Santa Rosa who came together to make this happen. That's why we're here tonight, to present this award to the citizens, the government, and all the stakeholders in Santa Rosa for a job well done.
That was a perfect summary, Mr. Dixon. Thank you. And I'm glad you highlight -- Emus, would you like to say one?
If I may just add one quick comment. Almost nothing else. The CEO of the California Massage Therapy Council. I was also here that infamous Valentine's Night at your library when the whole thing started. And I just wanted to share with you, I have a feeling that the California legislature would be very pleased with what is happening in the city. And the reason why I'm getting this feeling is I'd like to point you, call your attention to the California Massage Therapy Act, Section 4600.5(c), which reads, "It is the intent of the legislature that local governments, law enforcement, nonprofit stakeholders, the massage industry, and the massage professionals work together going forward to improve communication and share information to further increase the value of statewide certification, to collaborate in the implementation of this act, and to develop a model ordinance reflecting best practices in massage regulation for cities and counties to adapt that will respect local control, patient privacy, and the dignity of the profession of massage therapy." And I feel that the people of the city and the leaders of the city really embody the intent of the legislature. So thank you.
Well, we are honored. And you underlined all the right points. Mr. Dixon, thank you for calling out or for mentioning Curtis Bennett in particular. As I think some members of the audience today and certainly everyone on council recognizes, Curtis was instrumental in organizing the community groups that came together multiple times, starting with that Valentine's, the infamous Valentine's Day evening, but then continuing throughout the year, working with almost every department in the city, including code enforcement, the police, city council. Your points about this being a complete team activity with your leadership being a central part of it with the California Massage Therapy Council being right at the heart of it. We are honored to receive this award. We are thankful for your efforts. We are certainly thankful for the efforts of the community. And we're glad to be here today celebrating this, which, as I mentioned, has been a high point for the city of Santa Rosa and for our council this year. So thank you very much. I'll open this up to public comment and then we'll come down and do a photo op. Are there any members of the public here who either participated in the efforts that went into this award or would like to say a few words about the massage ordinance at this time? Seeing none, let's do the official presentation and photo op. Our thanks again to the California Massage Therapy Council and to all the citizens who made that award possible. We'll move on to item 7.3, our proclamation for Water Awareness Month. Ms. Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas water is essential for every living creature and is a precious and limited natural resource that must be stewarded wisely for future generations. And whereas the city of Santa Rosa is a purveyor of the water resource in the Santa Rosa community. And whereas the highly skilled staff of Santa Rosa Water are fully dedicated to protecting public health by sustaining water resources, infrastructure, and the environment 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year. And whereas, because water is a precious resource, wise use of water should be considered a way of life. And whereas, Santa Rosa Water encourages citywide understanding and appreciation of the value of water efficiency. And whereas, the Santa Rosa community has long demonstrated a commitment to using water wisely by minimizing water waste, installing over 59,500 water-efficient toilets and converting 4.3 million square feet of lawn to low-water-use landscapes. And whereas, the implementation of water use efficiency programs has resulted in an annual reduction of approximately 866 metric tons of greenhouse gases and 6,498 megawatt-hours of energy. And whereas, the city of Santa Rosa is the owner and operator of the regional water reuse system and is one of the largest recyclers of water, producing high-quality recycled water for many purposes, including irrigation of parks, commercial businesses, and a community garden. And whereas, for every drop of recycled water used, a drop of potable water is saved. Now therefore be it resolved that our mayor, Mark Stapp, the mayor of the city of Santa Rosa, on behalf of the entire city council, proclaims May 2025 as Water Awareness Month and encourage all citizens to do your part. Be water smart. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we have Claire Nordly here to accept the award or to accept the proclamation, rather. Claire, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Stapp and Councilmember Rogers and members of the council. I just want to say thank you on behalf of the Water Use Efficiency Team. Is it on? Can you hear me?
Move a little bit closer, Claire. That mic doesn't pick it up very well.
Okay, can you hear me now?
There we go. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Mayor Stapp and members of the council for the proclamation. I'm Claire Nordly. I'm just here to announce that there are a couple of water awareness activities coming up this month. Last weekend, we had the Eco-Friendly Garden Tour, which was on May 10th. And I understand a few of you attended and were able to tour some of the gardens. There were over 3,000 people that attended that tour. And there were six gardens highlighted in Santa Rosa alone. We also have, and just right after this agenda item, we have our Water Use Efficiency Award winners. And we're excited to present them the awards. So thank you again for the water awareness proclamation and see you soon.
Thank you, Claire, and thank you for the segue into the awards presentation. But before we do that, we'll open it up to public comment. Would any members of the public like to speak on Water Awareness Month? Ms. Carmen, the floor is yours.
Hi. Thank you for doing this. This is marvelous. And I'm glad to see this happening today and glad to be here. And I just want to say that one of the reasons why this area is a great place for water, moisture, super-environmental environment is the trees. And saving the trees is really important here to be sure that they remain part of lawfully being cut and not just abused and people closing their eyes and looking the other way. The trees are what makes the water such a great thing here in Santa Rosa. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Would any other members of the public like to speak? All right, we'll close public comment and we'll bring anyone who's in the audience, including Claire, down to the front to do a quick photo op. As Claire mentioned, we're going to move next to item 7.4, which is the presentation of our water efficiency awards. As part of Water Awareness Month, we're going to recognize those in our community, some of those that have gone above and beyond to save water. And before we present the awards, we're going to have a short video that will be playing in honor of this year's recipients. Madam City Clerk?
Congratulations to Santa Rosa Water's three 2025 Water Use Efficiency Award winners for their outstanding efforts to increase water efficiency in their homes, communities, and businesses. This year's award winners are Alfredo Valencia, who installed 330 gallons of rainwater storage to supplement his irrigation needs and participated in our direct install program to replace a high-flow toilet and fixtures with high-efficiency ones. These actions have saved approximately 20,000 gallons of water a year. Deborah Dubre, who replaced over 2,900 square feet of grass in her yard, incorporating stormwater features and low-water-use plants. She installed a rain garden, helping to reduce erosion and flooding and allowing rainwater to sink into the soil and recharge our community's groundwater. Her efforts are saving over 32,000 gallons of water annually. Richard Dobbins, who installed 275 gallons of rainwater storage, removed 325 square feet of grass, and used a rebate to replace his high-flow toilet and fixtures with high-efficiency ones. His actions save about 9,000 gallons of water annually. Thank you to our 2025 Water Use Efficiency Award winners for achieving exceptional water savings.
Impressive. And thank you to our water team for that video. Now, we're going to ask the recipients to come up one by one after I call their names so that they can accept their award. And then once you've been called up, if you could please stay up front because we're going to take a group photo at the end. Now, the first award recipient, Alfredo Valencia, rather, he may not be present. Is anyone here on behalf of Alfredo Valencia to accept the award? All right, we'll make sure that Alfredo gets that. We'd like to call up Deborah Dubre. Deborah, come up. All right. For our second and third recipients, we have technical issues tonight. We have Richard Dobbins and Jack Williams.
Presenting will be Chief Bush from Sonoma County Fire District, and James Pearson, President and COO of Medic Ambulance, and I'll turn it over to them for the presentation.
Make sure I get this right. Thank you for taking the time out to hear us out today. We are really happy to come in front of you and let you know how well the system is doing. As you know, Sonoma County Fire District and Medic Ambulance, as our subcontractor, have entered into an agreement to provide ground transport service in exclusive operating area number one. I want to give you a first little background on who Sonoma County Fire District is, and I'll pull a map up here in just a minute, but Sonoma County Fire District, can you advance?
No.
Nope, we got it, hang on. Sonoma County Fire District responds to over 4,000, or 40,000 incidents, fires, emergency medical, and emergency responses. We're a partner to Santa Rosa Fire Department. We provide EMS care across 425 square miles. We were established in April of 2019 by the combination of, or consolidation of Windsor, Rincon Valley, Bennett Valley, and Mountain. In 2020, we also brought in Russian River Forestville and Bodega Bay. I'm going to tell you a little bit, or Jimmy's going to tell you a little bit about Medic Ambulance.
Good evening, everyone. Again, Jimmy Pearson and Medic Ambulance. We're a family-owned and operated business. We started in the city of Vallejo. My grandparents and uncle, yes, we are literally a family business. I've been a paramedic for 20-plus years, but my grandparents and uncle and aunt and all immigrated from Italy and started medic in 1979. Next month will be our 46th year. My mom is our current CEO, again, a little bit of nepotism, but she's a tough boss. And, but we're not just a mom and pop. So we operate 150,000 calls annually. We have 675 employees, and we operate in seven counties. We do the 911 exclusive ambulance service for Solano County, obviously Sonoma County EOA-1, and in Sacramento with a partnership with Sacramento Fire as well.
Okay, let's see, push the button. In 2023, the Sonoma County Fire District, along with Medic as our subcontractor, were awarded the bid to the exclusive area, or exclusive operating area, which we started providing service in January of '24. We're the contract holder with the County of Sonoma, with Medic as our subcontractor. We're truly partners in care and have integrated our leadership teams together to provide the best level of service that we can. I'd like you to just take a look at the map real quick. It kind of gives you an idea of what we provide service for. So to give you some orientation, the centerpiece is Santa Rosa City. The blue area is the exclusive operating area where we provide ground transport service, and the red area is the Sonoma County Fire District currently today. In that area, it's about 436 square miles, and like I said before, we cover about 40,000 emergency responses in that area. So you can kind of see, not only is Santa Rosa a good partner to us, they're in the center of where we provide our service level. Approximately 80% of the service that we provide is in the city limits of Santa Rosa. Sonoma County Fire District and the Sonoma County Health and Human Services entered into an agreement. They enforce our standards and our compliance for the ambulance service agreement. Redcom is our dispatch center. They also are an intricate piece of the compliance data. The data goes straight from Redcom, right to, from the CAD, right to Redcom, right to our First Watch Online Compliance Utility Program, which helps us with compliance. And we'll show you a slide here, next slide, Jimmy? Jimmy's going to kind of walk through. This is a slide of compliance standards.
So these are the standards that we have with the EOA contract for our ALS and BLS first response in the non-fraul zones. So in a fraul zone, frauls means first responder ALS, and in that zone, the first responder ALS would have a 6-minute 59-second standard, and the ambulance would have a 10-minute 59-second standard. And in those zones like Sebastopol, Roanoke Park, Cotati, where we don't have first responder ALS, we would have a 7-minute standard. And just from a system-wide perspective, statewide perspective, even nationwide perspective, these are some of the strictest ambulance response standards. In Solano County, for example, we have very similar partnership with fire, where they have to be on scene in seven minutes, but we actually have 11:59, so in here it's 10:59. So just in a relative manner, it's a very strict standard. And what we have with you guys today in the slides is our performance dating back to April of '24, and we gave up to February, because the county's still adjudicating, was it March and April, which will be released shortly. So we highlighted the Oakmont-Santa Rosa response zones, so there's eight zones, not to worry all day, but we could go into this for a long time. But Zone 1 is the Oakmont area, Zone 2, Roanoke Park, Zone 3, Santa Rosa Urban, and then you have Sebastopol semi-rule zones, rule, and emergency ALS IFT, which is inter-facility emergency transfers. All those have strict compliance standards for all those.
So I'd like to, I'd like to just point out that we're focusing clearly today on just the Santa Rosa zones. We left you some leave-behind documents that you can have after we're done. The system, as we're looking at 98.45% in June, 98.84, that's the core area of Santa Rosa. As we get farther out to Oakmont, it's a little harder to hit high numbers, but we're held to a 90% or above standard. So if we are below 90%, then we can receive fines for that. So what I would like to say by looking at these slides is the service has never been better. We're providing top-notch ALS and BLS service across the EOA.
And so some of the highlights to get to that, to get to these standards that we offer during our bidding, that we've implemented over the last 15 months, is a peak of 21 ambulances, a mix of BLS and ALS ambulances, a medical ambulance bus that can transport up to 24 patients. So if you guys ever want to come by the station on Corporate Center Parkway, it's parked over there. It's a great resource. Medic, we have an ambulance bus in Sonoma, and we have one here, or in Solano, that actually came for the fires. So we wanted to make sure we had one up and ready when service delivery was up. So it's a great resource. We have four, four-by-four ambulances. We have an ATV ambulance as well, a special operations vehicle that our ambulance strike team leaders will use in case of a major event. They have Wi-Fi capability, TV monitoring, just other assets that you use in high emergent situations. We have a mobile command center that we're still putting together that will have, but it's here. We're just getting the radios set up so that we have better interoperability with the Redcom and field crews. A dedicated bariatric ambulance, so all of our ambulances have the autoloader gurneys, which can handle up to 700 pounds, and it's an amazing technology, because you just push it in and pull it out, and it saves on the wear and tear of our field providers. But this vehicle specific has a winch system and can transport patients that can get up to 1,400 pounds. So it's, again, another great medical asset to have. Over the last, when we went live with the contract in the four months leading up to January of last year, we had onboard over 140 employees, 25 new ambulances, like I said, with autoloader striker power gurneys. And just break up some anonymous, so you don't think we're, give you some real-world Some system enhancements that we also, we have a 15,000-square-foot facility at 1269 Corporate. We also wanted to give more opportunities for field staff to have what we call comfort stations, so they can get out of the ambulance and relax. So we've done that with a station in Oakmont, with our Tuscany Circle Station, and also with a couple of the fire stations on Todd Road and Middle Rincon Road. We have a four-year labor agreement that was agreed to last September, so a very stable workforce. We were, when we took over the contract, I would say that they had great caregivers, but there was a lot of gaps in terms of having the healthcare providers that needed to be in the dedicated workforce of Sonoma County. We've worked diligently over that for the last 14 months through scholarship programs, recruitment programs, and we're very excited to say that there was travel medics that were in the system before we took over, that we did maintain, but there are no more travel medics. We have a fully staff of paramedics. We have over 30 of our EMTs in paramedic school, and we have a robust EMT group that want SSTs, restock ambulances that are going to EMT school as well. So building that sustainable workforce was a big deal for us. Let's talk about the.
So I just want to kind of build on what Jimmy was saying. The system is really great. If you ever have an opportunity to go to Corporate Center and look at the operation, it's pretty fascinating to watch how they restock ambulances and get them moving through. Another couple of points that I would like to make are that we do have, currently have a first responder ALS agreement with the city of Santa Rosa, which ensures that we're reimbursing you for your engine companies going to the medical aid that they respond to. That pays for about 12 companies, or it pays towards 12 companies, a portion of it. We also have first responder basic life support agreements with Goldridge Fire District, as well as Rancho Adobe Fire District. So we're trying to pay it back into the system.
And just a couple of highlights, but just a couple of things that we offered were Lucas devices to enhance quality CPR in outskirts of the EOA, so as the countywide service. So we have 18 of those that are being deployed over these next couple of months. And when we started the contract, LifePak 15 was the standard monitor, and they came out with a new monitor called LifePak 35 that all of our ambulances, all of our paramedics have been trained on. It's with our field training officers right now, and we expect in the next 30, 60 days to be deploying the new LifePak 35s, which have just some amazing technology in terms of cardiac care and transferring data to the hospitals. And, you know, just in terms of training and education, there's a triennial exercise that we're going to be doing again this year. There's the Ambu Bus, and just training dedication, having the fire partnership between the private, the public, it's been amazing. And it just doesn't stop there. We have to build relationships, maintain relationships in the community, and we try to just not skip a beat and be a part of the community as best we can. So if any of your communities want to have ambulances come and do a showcase, or anything we can do, please let us know, because we have to continue building our future leaders from our community today to be ready for tomorrow.
Okay, so the Sonoma County Fire District is guided by our principles, honesty, respect, and integrity. We're committed to providing the highest level of service that we can to the residents and visitors of your community and other communities countywide. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you for your time today. I know you guys have a busy schedule, and would open it up to any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for this presentation. I'll bring it back to council. Any questions? Mr. Kripke?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So on Slides 9 and 10, your compliance statistics. So for Zone 1 and Zone 3, is that time, percentage of the time that one of your units is on scene, or paramedic period?
That's all. Yeah, so that's a compliance data with a paramedic arriving on scene, and it's really hard to sit down and explain to you exactly how it works, but compliance works by corrections, exemptions, and other things that are built into the contract, so that if, for a fraul example, frauls with Santa Rosa Engine Company, that's the first engine company arriving on scene, which either extends the clock for our ambulance to get there a couple of minutes later, or in a lot of cases, our ambulance gets there ahead of time.
But this would be the ambulance-only response time?
So these statistics are ambulance-only?
These are measuring the ambulance to the compliance standard in the slide before that had.
Okay, so it's not ambulance first, it's ambulance on that sliding scale, so if you get extended, if an engine gets there first, that counts as compliance?
So the engine getting on scene doesn't matter. If we're in a fraul zone, our response compliance is 10 minutes and 59 seconds for deltas and echos, and charlies is 1559. So that would be measuring those zones to that standard, to the ambulance-only standard. The fire department does not stop our clock, it extends our clock.
Okay, so if it extends your clock, how often is a fire engine and a paramedic on scene first before your ambulance?
I can get you that number, but.
I would love that number, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And we have all that, we track it. I could tell you, just from what we see within the first five minutes of your engine's response time, so, and I can break it down if we were on scene prior or after, but over 68% of the time, we are on scene within the first five minutes of the engine. But I can, we can, if we get some specifics, like if there's an exact number on which one afterwards, we get it to chief, we can easily get you that data.
That would be great, thank you.
Absolutely.
And then on Slide 8, it talks about the ALS response time requirements or Code 3. What are Code 3? What kind of events are those?
So, right now, and Ron can maybe speak a little more to that, right now, what's being measured right now is not Code 3 or Code 2 per the county and those compliance. That's what our contract currently says, that parentheses Code 3. The county's holding us to the delta, the Charlie, Delta, Echo, Alpha, and Bravo standard. So that's the determinant that's done through Redcom when someone calls and you have an emergency medical dispatcher, and as they answer the questions, it's classified as an echo, which is the most immediate, delta, which is right under echo, Charlie, moderate symptoms, and then Bravo, Alpha. So Code 3 is lights and sirens, right? But how we're measured is in the priority symptom.
Okay, so let me ask it a different way. What kind of events necessitate lights and sirens?
Breathing.
Yeah, probably severe chest pain, shortness of breath, any of those high-level, high-acuity calls. Again, I think this is something that, if we can get into the weeds with you, we can, but I think it would be better if we could maybe meet one-on-one and explain it to you a little bit better, because it's kind of an interesting, the way that this is measured is currently, we're in collaboration with the County of Sonoma to create less ambiguity over the charts that they provided in the contract.
There's about 700 determinant codes overall, that, I mean, when a dispatcher answers, like let's say.
I understand that. So, okay, so then Code 2, no lights and sirens?
Yeah.
Okay, what is, what are those kinds of events?
Majority of those you'd see is also Alphas, Bravos, and some Charlies, not all Charlies.
Okay, so the Code 2s are, Code 2s are also included in these, in these response signs?
Absolutely, no, absolutely. So the numbers we gave you in Slides 9 and 10, those were the county's numbers that were released through our OCU platform. That's the county's third-party system. So when a call comes in, it's ran through Redcom, right, which is not our dispatch center, and then the data is passed through First Watch OCU, which is the county system that measures compliance. When a call is determined late, based on, not Code 2 or Code 3, based on Echo, Delta, Charlie, Bravo, or Alpha, it's put into OCU, and then we have to respond through the county through OCU. So right now, the standards you're seeing are from the county through OCU, right, and everything having a standard, including Alphas and Bravos, and Charlies, at the 1559 standard.
Okay. I'll save my comments for after.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers?
Thank you. Councilmember Kripke, you had, we're on the same line of thought process. I still don't really understand whether or not it's the rig showing up or the truck showing up if it delays. So I was one of the people that definitely supported this partnership, and I'm.
So that's the determinant that's done through Redcom, when someone calls and you have an emergency medical dispatcher, and as they answer the questions, it's classified as an Echo, which is the most immediate, Delta, which is right under Echo, Charlie, moderate symptoms, and then Bravo, Alpha. So Code 3 is lights and sirens, right? But how we're measured is in the priority symptom.
Okay, so let me ask it a different way. What kind of events necessitate lights and sirens?
Yeah, probably severe chest pain, shortness of breath, any of those high-level, high-acuity calls. Again, I think this is something that, if we can get into the weeds with you, we can, but I think it would be better if we could maybe meet one-on-one and explain it to you a little bit better, because it's kind of an interesting, the way that this is measured is currently, we're in collaboration with the County of Sonoma to create less ambiguity over the charts that they provided in the contract.
There's about 700 determinant codes overall, that, I mean, when a dispatcher answers, like let's say.
I understand that. So, okay, so then Code 2, no lights and sirens?
Yep.
Okay, what is, what are those kinds of events?
Majority of those you'd see is also Alphas, Bravos, and some Charlies, not all Charlies.
Okay, so the Code 2s are also included in these, in these response times?
Absolutely, no, absolutely.
Okay.
So the numbers we gave you in slides nine, nine and 10, those were the county's numbers that were released through our OCU platform. That's the county's third-party system. So when a call comes in, it's ran through Redcom, right, which is not our dispatch center, and then the data is passed through First Watch OCU, which is the county system that measures compliance. When a call is determined late, based on, not Code 2 or Code 3, based on Echo, Delta, Charlie, Bravo, or Alpha, it's put into OCU, and then we have to respond through the county through OCU. So right now, the standards you're seeing are from the county through OCU, right, and everything having a standard, including Alphas and Bravos, and Charlies, at the 1559 standard.
Okay. I'll save my comments for after.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers?
Thank you. Councilmember Krepke, you had, we're on the same, same line of thought process. I still don't really understand whether or not it's the rig showing up or the truck showing up if it delays. So I was one of the people that definitely supported this partnership, and I'm looking at, for its success. And these are some of the questions or problems that came up when we had AMR.
Yep.
So I just want to make sure that this partnership did address them. So that was one of my questions. Also, how many rigs do you have in the city, within the city limits, at any given time? What is the highest amount, and what is the lowest amount, and does that depend on a time of day?
Yeah, great question. So I'll go with the ambulance question first, right? So it always depends on our levels, but we do, we grabbed historical trends. We do not have multiple posting plans. We don't change it based on compliance. We looked at the historical data over three years, and we built a posting plan that we wanted to cover at greater than 120% of the system demand. So at minimum, our Level 1 ambulance is always going to be at Todd Road, so central, in central Santa Rosa. And then obviously, as we add more units, it scales up, and we have to cover the seven-minute zones. But when we're at Level 6, there's two in every city, and then it only goes up from there, which predominantly more ambulances will be here, and we peak out with 21 ambulances on the street, which is 15 ALS and six BLS.
But not in the city of Santa Rosa?
Well, I mean, we can get you guys, we can give a posting list, and that lists out all our levels, and we can share that with you after here. So you can literally see, if there's one ambulance in our system, it'll go here, if there's two, three, four, and we'll share with you the address.
Okay. Happy to know that you're fully staffed. A reason why I ask is because we're having our own difficulties, and I just want to make sure that when our rigs or trucks get there, that as soon as you guys get someone there, that our people are relieved, and they can go and do what we need them to do. So what is the average wait time? And I don't know if chief knows the answer to this, or if you guys know the answer to this, from the time you guys arrive to the time that our staff are able to be relieved, so they can get ready for the next?
Yeah, it's kind of a wild card, depending on the level or the type of call. So obviously, a CPR in progress call, the engine company is going to be there for quite a while. On the lower acuity calls, they're released as soon as the ambulance feels like they have the patient under control, and they're loading them into the ambulance, or they're loading themselves. So I think that Chief Westrop may be able to.
Thanks for the question, councilmember. We're actually assessing that right now. Unfortunately, what happened was we switched our data collection system midstream, midyear, and so we're going, having to go through and hand tabulate it. So we have several people in our office going through and looking at our on-scene time, because one of the big things that we discussed in building the ground ambulance contract and the RFP for the ground ambulance contract was, what are the impacts to Santa Rosa's on-scene times and unit hour utilization? So the County of Sonoma, and it was the entirety of the system, it's nobody's fault necessarily, but took on a lot of new things all at once. So on top of the new provider, we also took on tiered response and BLS ambulances in the system. So it was a major sweeping change across the board for the MS system, and so that's one thing that we always said is, at the end of the day, we want the best patient care, best customer service, and least impact to our operations as possible. So Chief McCallum could test, I push on him for this every day, that we're looking for comparative analysis of our on-scene times right now. And we'll bring that back to you.
Okay, perfect. And one last question. Is there a rig in Oakmont? Because those seem to be some of our most vulnerable in our, with our population, with their aging, and, you know, so I would think that they have some of the most severe calls. And I was fortunate enough to go on a ride-along, and our wait time for a rig was very, 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 very long. And that was very troublesome for me. So that's where that question came from.
Yeah, we have a 24-hour station in Oakmont, staffed by two 12-hour ambulances, one during the day and one at night. They relieve each other. So, you know, again, and it's a priority post for us, so, you know, Oakmont is a, we don't, I don't sleep at night thinking Oakmont, so believe me, it's at the top of our, top of mind for us.
All right. Well, Mr. President and Chief Bush, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, and as you know, council was very supportive of bringing these services back to the county, because we felt, we had concerns over some of the response times from AMR, which I think is why some of this questioning feels pretty hard-ass on you guys. Sorry about that. So how many EO1 calls does the City of Santa Rosa produce? You said about 80% of them in the whole county?
Yeah, so I think total system-wide is around 27,500 calls, so roughly 80% of those.
Okay, so of that, about how much revenue is driven from 80% of those calls?
I don't have a good number for you right now. What I would say is, what I would say is, to Chief Westrop's point, the system has changed. So we shifted a paradigm from an ALS, all ALS system, where every time you respond, you have an ALS ambulance that shows up, to an ALS or BLS. And when the, with the way that the charts are written through the county, the BLS units have a little more time to get there, so that may be some of the delay, but it's because of a paradigm shift. And I would point it to a risk management perspective of having a person that's 27 years old in an ambulance, running through a red light to make a time compliance standard versus getting there safely. And so this is a big shift in how it was provided in the county. We think it's the right work. We are still only providing BLS tiered response within Santa Rosa and the Sonoma County Fire District, but as far as revenue goes, I don't know. I mean, I could probably get back to you with a number on that.
Well, the reason I ask is because, as Councilmember Rogers said, we're going through our own set of issues, so I'm hopeful that we'll be able to negotiate a fair contract if we're producing 80% of the income that's coming from the calls. And then I just have a question on the paramedics that are on the fire trucks. Does that not help with the compliance? Because we have our own paramedics, does that not help with stopping the clock?
It doesn't stop our clock, right? So it does help with our clock, it gives us an extension on our clock. So if we didn't have paramedics, let's say, on your engines, like in Roanoke Parks, the basketball, we'd have to be there in 6 minutes and 59 seconds. Because you have paramedics, the ambulance clock is 10 minutes and 59 seconds.
And I'd like to just add to that point. So when AMR was here, I'm not sure what the number was that they provided for a first responder ALS, but currently, the system that we're providing is paying the City of Santa Rosa $1.5 million to provide that same level of service on more companies.
And then what is the City of Santa Rosa obligated to provide because of that contract?
Respond to the calls you would normally respond to.
Did we have to hire any other staff for that?
No, Councilmember McDonald, so the current frauls contract pays for our current 12 ALS resources to be paramedic-equipped and staffed. Two of those resources, the paramedic costs are paid for out of PSAP or Measure O, but it covers our employee costs, including the EMS division chief, I'm sorry, not the EMS captain, and the paramedic incentives for the personnel, except those that are paid for by Measure O or PSAP.
Okay. So what I'm trying to get at is, because we have paramedics on our fire trucks, and because we help with compliance, what I want to ensure is, if we're providing 80% of the call volume as far as Santa Rosa citizens, and that's where a majority of your revenue is coming from the County of Sonoma, I want to make sure that when we go to negotiations, that we're getting our fair share to actually offset all the paramedics that we're paying for to get on the trucks, that stop the clock for Sonoma County ambulance services, and then that helps us as well with continuing to provide that service. So that's, that's what I'm getting at, is as we go forward, and I want this contract to run smoothly, I want to make sure that Sonoma County, and specifically, Santa Rosa Fire Department, because that's our first team at this council, is getting their fair share of the revenue on this. I understand the $1.5 million contract, I don't believe that covers all the paramedics we provide on our fire trucks, does it?
Well, at the time that we calculated the contract, it did, but obviously, the numbers have changed with the increase in MOU contract language, so the number's gone up. So at the time that we had, at the time we evaluated our EMS system in its entirety a couple of years ago, when we decided on that number, but the number has obviously changed with the increase in contracts.
And this is just a question, but why has Santa Rosa never run their own ambulance service? Because it would seem that it's a revenue opportunity for us.
It's come up quite often through the course of time. I mean, ambulance contracts only are renewed every five or 10 years, and quite frankly, we were in a place last time where we just did not have the financial capability to do that, because you have to come up with, you know, $30 million in capital, something like that. So the city's just never been in a position to put up the capital to do such a service.
Well, thank you for those answers, and again, I appreciate all your CAD responses around revenues. I think that that's all of our primary concern right now for the City of Santa Rosa, but specifically, making sure that our citizens, and since so many Priority 1 calls and calls go out to Oakmont, which is my district, I want to make sure that those call times are being cut down, and that we're serving our community as best we can. Public safety is obviously a big concern for us on this council, so thank you.
I have just two questions, and they're a lot easier. It was, it was good news with respect to not having travel medics anymore. Thank you for sharing that. Out of curiosity, how many of the new hires are coming out of SRJC or local programs?
Majority of our new promotions have come from SRJC or College of Siskiess Program that's in Ucaia now. So we have 32 paramedics that are in both, 32 EMTs that are in both of those schools, with predominated being SRJC.
Excellent. Is there any kind of dedicated pipeline from SRJC to medic?
There isn't, but what we have is called a pathways program, so it's a, people kind of call it an earn-to-learn type program, so we pay them a stipend to go to school. They work two days a week, they're still considered full-time, so they don't have to lose health benefits, and they don't have to focus about working full-time and going to school. We pay during didactic, then clinicals, and then they can actually reduce the work hours and focus on their field internship for that last phase, and all that's paid for, school, and then they get a stipend of their normal EMT rate while they're going to paramedic school. So it's a huge investment for us, for the district, but also making sure, it really helps us rebuild our workforce, which is what we wanted to do, and we had to start very aggressively 14 months ago, and I could say, I think we had nine students in Earn to Learn, another four or five in scholarship only, and that's with a waiting list for paramedicine, which is really cool. It's not, it's always good to have the local aspect, but we've been able to bring in some paramedics from Australia, and I know some people consider them travelers, but they're not. They are obviously traveling from Australia, but they're here, they're part of our collective bargaining agreement, they're California paramedics, they're local, they live here, they're on two-year work visas, but they're, they're part of the community, and it's been awesome, they love it. So just multifaceted, right? Building that, you had a COVID gap of a workforce, so that's where the Australians can come in, because in Australia, it's actually a bachelor program to be a paramedic, and the fourth year, you're actually a nurse. So a couple of our Australian paramedics are actually paramedic slash nurses. So they have a, kind of a cool way to do it there, but everywhere's different, but they're actually, they're not travelers, they're here. So rebuilding that sustainable workforce takes time, money, effort, but we're there.
Just, I want to add just one point to that, is that we have actually, Sonoma County Fire District has hired several paramedics from SCFD EMS and brought them on as firefighters, so that relationship has been really good. I don't know that Santa Rosa has hired any from that system yet, but we've had great results with it.
All right, well, thank you for highlighting that. Obviously, the council is concerned about regional workforce development as well. And one last softball question, and James, thank you for, I've heard you speak on other occasions, it was, several of us were part of the ribbon cutting a year ago, or 14 months ago, and you always do a nice job of highlighting the fact that you're from a family firm, that you want to, that you make a point of investing back in the community. I'm just wondering, are there any plans to have a signature event, like the Solano Turkey Trot, or some of the events that you invest in elsewhere, something with medic's name on it here in the county?
Always, yep. We're always, we're always, we work with the Chamber of Commerce, we took, helped, not sponsor, but almost forget the name, but the Workforce Development Program, but where we teach the kids to come into our, into our facility for two days, but we're in. I mean, we're all about the community, so we want to start a turkey, Sonoma Turkey Trot, we're in. We're, whatever, I think for us, it's just organically being a part of that community and knowing that we're a resource, right, to call us where you think we're needed, and we're SCFD and medic. This is what we do. This is where our family is from, this area, we care, we have property here, this community and this county means a lot to us, just like anywhere we operate.
Well, thank you for that. Obviously, this council is looking for, for community investment as well. Seeing no other questions from council, we will open this up to public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for any final comments or requests. Mr. Krepke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my one comment on this is, on an item entitled Ground Ambulance Contract Compliance and Having the Inability to Really Give Succinct Answers As To Whether Compliance Is Being Reached Or Not, and having it being told that it's too difficult to explain to us, we need a one-on-one to get into the weeds, is not necessarily something that I'm overly enthusiastic about. You know, plus the comments of, well, our county contract says this, but we do that, and if we're supposed to determine whether or not you're servicing our community correctly as it pertains to compliance to a contract, we need easily digestible information. We need to know what that information is supposed to be, not whether it's what you do versus what the contract says, what is supposed to be, how we're supposed to be being serviced.
So to that point, the document that you have with the compliance data on it is the compliance data that was run through the OCU program, and it's showing that we are compliant in UA1, in all areas.
Okay, let me be a little bit more succinct. I need to have information that's digestible to me to determine whether or not I think you're being in compliance, whether, versus whether you tell me that you are in compliance, and I have to trust you.
So I have no control, I have no control over the data. The data comes out of our Redcom Dispatch Center, goes through a county, I'm a fire district, I'm a special district with elected officials such as you are, okay? The County of Sonoma, the LEMSA, gets all that data into a program, and it spits out compliance data. We have no control over the data from the, other than when our people hit the en route button and the on-scene button, that's the only part of that, that whole system where we actually put data into it. From that point on, it's controlled by a CAD system, and it goes and it's fed into an OCU program, a utility program, that looks at timeframes for responses in each of those zones, and what type of a call it is. So I understand that you're saying that you want us to simplify it for you, what I'm trying to say is, it's a very complicated system that would take us some time to even sit down one-on-one and explain to you. But right now, as it stands today, we are 98% compliant in the City of Santa Rosa, and we're 91% compliant in Oakmont, so we are compliant.
Councilmember Krepke, just in the essence of time, I understand what your point is and where you're headed with that, and we will work with the district to present council or bring council back some better information that's more digestible for you in a format that's easier to understand and read, it is complicated, and so I understand where you're going with it, and we will work with the district to bring you something that's easily digestible.
Appreciate that, thank you, chief.
Ms. Rogers?
I just want to say, I think we haven't discussed this, but part of the frustration might be, is that when we decided to partner, a lot of information was given to us, so we're not necessarily new. Sometimes we may ask questions so the community can better understand, but these are still numbers that we can easily digest, because you guys have taken us through first through 12th grade very quickly for us to get this partnership off the ground in the first place. So we can digest it, we do know, but we may ask questions for the community to understand. So next time, it would be nice just to have a little bit more information, probably knowing that we are going to ask some, some numbers, more numbers questions. Thank you.
Any additional final comments from council? And Chief Bush, Mr. Pearson, or President Pearson, thank you, thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you to show, we feel like we're being very successful, we're providing a different level and a higher level of service in your city, as well as the EOA.
Well, this, I'm sure this is the first of many discussions, and I hope it came across that Santa Rosa, like I'm sure many of the other cities in the county, are very interested in emergency response services. very interested in, in emergency response services. So I'm sure we'll be picking this up in the near future. Thank you for, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Listrop. With that, let's go to item nine, nine point, let's see, item nine, city managers and city attorneys' reports. Madam City Manager? I'm catching you off guard, Madam City Manager. It is, it is a city manager and city attorneys' reports right now. Madam City Manager, anything to share? Answer's yes. We're on pins and needles.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. So, I have a couple items today. So Bay Area Bike to Work is this Thursday. Bike to Work Day is Thursday, May the 15th, from 6:30 to 9:30 a.m. It's a great time to celebrate sustainability, community across the bay. If you need directions on how to bike across Santa Rosa, you can call Director Hennessy. He can get you to work. So you can stop by the City Engineer Station at Santa Rosa Avenue and Prince Memorial Greenway for some snacks, some giveaways, some bike tune-ups, some breakaway, bike tune-ups by Breakaway Bikes, and support from SCTA and Bikable Santa Rosa. So if you want to learn more about that, go to srcity.org/biketworkday2025. And again, Dan offers up his service to get you to and from work on time. So the final active transportation plan has been released. The city has released the final active transportation plan. This plan actually reflects 18 months of collaboration with the city's Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board, and also some, several partner agencies and some community members who generously donated their time and input to the plan. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board will formally review the final plan during their public meeting on May the 15th, Thursday. The plan will be presented to this governing body, city body, city council for adoption on July the 8th. Members are encouraged to review the final ATP at srcity.org/ATP. And that's all I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. Madam City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I do have my monthly litigation report. Okay, there were no settlements that were previously authorized by council in closed session finalized in the month of April. Our caseload continues to remain constant with 31 current litigation matters at this point. Many cases are currently in the discovery phase. Most have trial dates assigned to them. And as always, we continue to resolve smaller cases and claims at little or no cost to the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on either of those reports? Mr. DeWitt, it's been a while. Welcome back.
Hello. My name is Dwayne DeWitt. I'm from Roseland. I wanted to make sure and thank the city manager for the beginning of the report on the active transportation plan process that's gone forward for so long. Also wanted to thank Dan Hennessy, who she pointed out, for all the extra work that he's doing on this. It's important that you folks understand one important thing that came about almost 15 years ago, when the city staff convinced the county of Sonoma to spend money to buy six acres on the south side of Roseland Creek. Spent $2.5 million with the rationale that that would be the spot for a bike way, greenway on the south side of Roseland Creek. Earlier this year, Mr. Hennessy was giving his capital improvements program discussion, and he pointed out that this year is when they expect there to be a bike path put across the Roseland Creek neighborhood. He didn't state if it would be on the south side of the creek. I think it really needs to be pointed out where it's going to be, especially because that $2.5 million of taxpayers' money was spent originally with the rationale that the bike path would be on the south side of the creek. Now, if there's been a switch along the way, that really, in a sense, has been duplicitous and disingenuous to the taxpayers. You know, you can say, well, those previous staff members are no longer here, they've left, and we changed our minds, and that's the way that goes. But it really leaves a foul taste in the minds of the taxpayers when they see this type of a switch. It's really important. There's a lot of people out there who volunteered for decades to do positive stuff at that Roseland neighborhood. And that bike way, greenway on the south side of the creek is an important part of what was, at least then, the rationale. Right now, housing development is coming in just to the south of it. And I've been told that one of the selling points is the park right nearby, and the bike path that's going to come in. So how about you folks do some due diligence and find out where the path is actually going to go? I'll go to the Thursday meeting of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, and I'll talk about the active transportation plan again. But they don't really listen to us that much. They listen to you folks. It comes from you, the elected officials, as to whether or not where something will actually be directed, and whether or not it will follow what was previously stated as the rationale for the purchase of 1,400 Burbank Avenue, 5.9 acres for $2.5 million, when the market rate at that time was only about $600,000. Some folks thought it was just a boondoggle, but I got faith. I know it's about that greenway. Thank you kindly for your time.
Thank you, Dwayne. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak? Seeing none, we'll go on to item 10, statements of abstention or recusal by council members. Are there any statements of abstention or recusal tonight? Ms. McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be abstaining from 13.9 out of the consent agenda due to a past personal relationship.
Thank you very much. Any other statements of abstention or recusal? Seeing none, we're going to keep everyone on their toes, seeing that it's after 5 o'clock. We're going to go over to item 14, our first public comment on non-agenda matters, and then go on to our two public hearings for the evening. So first item 14, public comment on non-agenda matters. Here's the, here, this is the time that members of the public can comment on any items not listed on the agenda. Are there any members of the public here who would like to speak on items not listed? Is it Richard?
Yes, sir.
Richard, the floor is yours. Welcome.
Oh, thank you. Mayor, council, city manager, staff, ladies and gentlemen, greetings. Here are sources of news and information that we do not get from the billionaires establishment media. These are available on the computer. Oh, well, prior planning precludes poor performance. The first one is a nightly news report by Amy Goodman, excellent source. The billionaire media does not tell the whole truth. The billionaire media lies. Media is the most powerful entity in the United States, more powerful than our government. A president of the United States stated that. The billionaires established a stranglehold on our government, and thus us, by the, by the use of their media. The billionaires write laws pertaining to taxes and wars for their further enrichment. But all is not lost. Here are some excellent sources that you're not going to get from the establishment media. These sources are not controlled by the billionaires, and a fully informed elect people are essential for democracies. One of their great lies, of course, was the Iraq War of 2003, where many people were enriched and many other people died. If, and they controlled PBS as well. During the buildup to that war, commentators on PBS were fired. They have a stranglehold on us, but these sources will maybe enlighten us a little better. God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Dwayne?
I'll use the overhead also. Nice comment, sir. Thank you. My name is Dwayne DeWitt. I'm from Roseland. What I've put up here today is a flyer for a property that's for sale over in the Bellevue Ranch neighborhood next to Southwest Community Park. The reason I've picked it is because this house right here, that they want $630,000 for now, was originally built with support for affordable housing. It's on a small lot. It was specifically set up on that small lot with self-help house building, Burbank Housing being involved, because this project originally was supposed to have affordable housing in the Bellevue Ranch subdivision. The developer, Bellevue Ranch, was Benjamin Tuxhorn Company. They did not provide their 64 units of affordable housing. They sloughed it off onto Burbank Housing and the taxpayers. The taxpayers paid to have affordable housing built with subsidies coming from the taxpayers. So you get a small house on a small lot subdivision, and it's supposed to be affordable. And one would think there would be covenants for long-term affordability. But guess what? They didn't do that. And so now this once affordable house is going for the current market rate of $630,000. There's not many young families that can afford that type of a house. What's happening over in Roseland is we're getting not just hundreds, but thousands of new housing units built over there also. And it's not people from Roseland who are being able to buy that housing, or rent it even. A unit right now runs about $2,300 a month. That used to be a mortgage payment. So I'm really concerned that you folks have perhaps not been fully informed along the way about how the City of Santa Rosa staff makes sure and maintains the affordability of the housing units that are supported with the taxpayers' money under the affordability paradigm. It's so important that you folks become involved in this. If you're not involved, no one really cares. And they just go with what comes next, and that's that. So there's about, oh, five apartments out in Sea Ranch that were built with affordable funds. They're being converted to ownership. They're going to be sold. Burbank Housing, there'll probably be million-dollar homes, once affordable. This kind of thing is happening all over the county. We could stop it, nip it in the bud right here in Santa Rosa, if you folks will take it on and make sure affordability covenants run for 55 years or longer, as stipulated. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Dwayne. Would any other members of the public like to speak? Janice, floor is yours.
Thank you. Hello again. I just want to, well, first I, second or whatever Dwayne said, I've been present at the meetings. I've heard the stories. I've seen it. But this is what I want to bring up today, is that PG&E has sort of disappeared in the background. And the PG&E still owes many people the money from the settlement that they managed to get new entities corporately, and moved along, and then continued to raise their rates. And the raising of the PG&E raise, I, I've lost track. I think they've raised them, I know at least twice, maybe more at this point. But this is a very serious issue. And there's older people that should have been paid a long time ago. And I'm sure there's people on the board there that know all about this, that should have been paid, haven't been paid. And they're just older, and they're, they're injured by this. And they were injured in the first place. Some of them died, of course. Some of them were just hurt or traumatized. But that money should be being recovered somehow. And I, I don't know what can be done, excuse me, still about it. It used to be if a lawsuit got to be five years old, you better get it settled, or you're going to be in trouble. But now, this has been, I think it's going into the eighth year. This is just not acceptable. And it shouldn't be acceptable to any adult who knows anyone who lived through the fires, survived, and is older. And there is money with the county related to this, but recently they were going to spend it for something else. But anyway, I'm just saying, in the know, PG&E still has not honored their original settlements, and especially to the older people. Thank you.
Thank you. Would any other members of the public like to speak? Seeing none, we will close public comment at this time, and we're going to move on to item 16.1, our public hearing for the evening, a petition to expand the Talbot Memorial Residential Permit Parking Zone to include the 100 block of Soto, Soto, my own, Soto, thank you, I'm just, thank you for the help, street. Let's see, I will turn it over to... Chad and Tanya?
Good afternoon, Mayor Stapp, Vice Mayor Alvarez, council members, Chad Hedge, Parking Division Manager. I've got Tanya Cordova here, our parking analyst. We're coming back tonight to talk about a petition that was submitted by the 100 block of Soto, Soto Yomi residence to include them into the residential parking permit program in that area. So for history, the residential, the downtown residential parking permit program was established in March of 2007. City Code Section 11-44.050 is what established the council, our permissions to add homes into the RPP program, the residential parking permit program. A petition was signed, and we received it and verified all the signatures from the residents on the 100 block of Soto Yomi. The street currently has two, two-hour time limited signs on the street from 9 to 6 p.m. Historically, or originally, these, we put these timelamps on, there's a lot of impact from the hospital. But since the hospital's completed that garage, now that street is a lot more open. But it's still difficult for the residents who live there to, to follow those two-hour time limits. There's not adequate onsite parking for the tenants. So we're trying to assist them with, with street parking with the permits. So this is just a map that shows the current Talbot residential area and the addition, the Soto Yomi 100 block, that's going to be added to the, to the program. We've already put them in the system. We've, we've put out signs to give some notification that these changes were going to happen. And we've got neighborhoods like this throughout the city. So it's, we just want to make sure we ran it by the council. The benefit of this, again, is it'll provide relief to the residents who right now don't have sufficient parking and are parking on the streets, but they have to move their cars every two hours. And then the two-hour time limit will continue for folks who don't have a permit, to make sure that it's not impacted by folks outside of that area. And then, so finally, it is recommended by the finance department that council by resolution approve the petition to add the 100 block of Soto Yomi Street to the Talbot Memorial Residential Permit Parking Zone. And we're available for any questions, if you have any.
Thank you both. Bringing it back to council for questions. Seeing none, we'll open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public here who wish to comment on this item?
Mayor, would you like to formally open the public hearing?
Oh, thank you for that reminder, yes. All right, we're going to formally open the public hearing. Now I'm going to ask whether there are any members of the public that would like to comment on this item. Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing and bringing it back to council. Ms. Benwellis, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see. Resolution of the council of the City of Santa Rosa, expanding the downtown residential permit parking zone to include the 100 block of Soto Yomi Street within the Talbot Memorial Residential Permit Parking Zone, and waive reading of the text. Second.
I'll give the second to Ms. Fleming. So we have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Krepke?
Aye.
Councilmember McDonald?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming? Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Benwellos.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alvarez.
Aye.
Mayor Stapp.
Yes.
Let the record show, this passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, now we will go back to item 11.1, our mayor and council members' reports. Are there any members of the council who would like to make reports this evening? That's true. We haven't had much time since our last meeting. Mr. Ocrepki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. On this past Friday, I was honored to be asked to be a speaker on a tour of state legislators of Santa Rosa as part of the Enviro Voters Climate Summit 2025, which was focused on, this tour was focused on rebuilding after the fire in more environmentally friendly ways. It was a great opportunity to talk with the state legislators that are heading up environmental causes, as well as those like Ben Allen and Jackie Irwin, who were senators, Ben Allen and Jackie Irwin, who represent the Eaton Fire and Palo State's Fire areas. Yesterday, at the Sonoma County Transportation, hold on, Sonoma County Transportation and Climate Authorities, the new name, meeting. One thing of note was we had a presentation on the current state and future of gas tax in the state of California and how basically since the mid-'90s, we have lost 50% of our peak gas tax revenue and looking forward at measures that can be taken going forward on clean energy vehicles as well. And then finally, I'd like to add an item to a future meeting agenda to discuss modification to zoning code section 20-61.020E, which addresses gas station modifications. And this requires a second so that we can have a discussion at a later time.
In the spirit of having the conversation, I will second that motion.
Thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk, did you get both of us?
Thank you. We will get that agendized for future discussion at the next regular council meeting on June 3rd to confirm whether or not it should go forward on a future agenda.
Perfect, thank you. Ms. Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor. On the 7th, I was able to attend the first night of the 2025 Wednesday Night Market, which was great. So if you were not able to go, I suggest that you meet us down there tomorrow or that you come another Wednesday during the season. On the 10th, I attended a couple of the eco-friendly garden tours that were put on by Sonoma Marin Saving Water Partnership. I was also able to attend the Inclusion Festival of 2025 down in Petaluma. And the theme was empowering communities. They have a mission to celebrate diversity, amplify voices, and foster connections that make our community stronger and more inclusive. I wrapped up my Saturday stopping by the city's Second Annual Bike in Block Party. I was able to ride a bike. I think that it was brought from Taco Tuesday Bike Riding Booth because Juan gave it to me. It was very shaky at the start. I will, I don't know why they say, "Once you know how to ride a bike, you never forget." But I did get it going. I hope none of that is on video about the first couple of seconds. But it was a lot of fun. So thank you to all of our staff who were there and everyone that participated. And on Sunday, May 11th, I was able to enjoy Mother's Day. But more importantly, I was able to share Mother's Day with my youngest of eight. Jalen Rose turned 14 on Mother's Day. So I would like to take this opportunity to wish him a happy birthday and also say that on this coming Thursday, I was honored to be asked to be a speaker at the SRJC Black Grad and on Friday at SSU's Black Grad. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other council members' reports? Oh, Ms. Fleming.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things to report. Sonoma Clean Power met on Thursday. And excitingly, we discussed potentially looking at, well, we gave permission to staff to go ahead and evaluate bringing Lake County into our service area, which is really exciting because Lake County, as many folks know, is one of the lowest-income areas in California, I think the lowest-income county in the state. And it relies heavily on natural gas and electrical. And we believe that it's possible that we may be able to provide them with lower-cost electrical service going forward. And so now we're going to be evaluating that. But that makes me, you know, want to share with everybody. In case you haven't done so, you can bring your PG&E or your Sonoma Clean Power bill down to the customer service center on Fourth Street, and they'll evaluate your bill and give you some tips and let you know what the line items are on that. Because if you're anything like me, the bill can seem a little overwhelming, even if you look at wonky stuff all day long. The Great Communities Collaborative met on Friday at Caritas on a tour of the North Bay. The mayor was there where we greeted folks and talked about housing and how inclusionary and forward-thinking our council is when it comes to housing and how our city staff has been just excellent in helping us get there. Went to Petaluma and got to see the new floating photovoltaic arrays out on the water there. And it was just a really good example of a sustainability project that's done with good labor, good working conditions. And finally, I know we all cannot wait for Saturday, which is the Rose Parade at 10:00 a.m. in downtown Santa Rosa. Hope to see you there.
Thank you. That concludes our mayor and council members' reports. One bit of cleanup from an earlier item. I should have mentioned that item 16.2, the second public hearing for the evening, which was the General Plan Amendment Package, that's being continued to June 3rd, 2025. So we're continuing item 16.2. Coming back to item 11.2, we've got an upcoming Mayors and Council Members Association meeting. And we have an agenda item that deals with that. A bit of context, both for city staff and for members of the public who are watching. There's a group called the Mayors and Council Members Association. It is a consortium of all nine Sonoma County cities. It meets, there's a board meeting that meets monthly. And all council members across the county will participate on at least a bimonthly basis. There is a desire from that group to be a bit more coordinated and active this year and in coming years. And to that end, there has been a decision to focus on two or three items that all cities have in common, or at least all cities support, in terms of our partnership with the county. So that group wants to have, identify a couple of top priority projects for the year to come. And then as a group, work with the county to push those initiatives forward. The catalyst for this was the discussion around homeless services funding. That's where this conversation began. It broadened out a bit. And it was, the decision was made at, at a mayor, at the, at two, it was made, I'm sorry. I'm stumbling over my words here. About six weeks ago, to have all of the councils in the county have a discussion amongst themselves, identify three or a maximum of three issues that were of concern, both to individual cities, that were of concern to individual cities as well as all the cities together, to bring back to the next Mayors and Council Members Association, which is a special meeting next week on the 22nd, and then agree during that discussion to focus on those items for the year to come. So that's our purpose right here, is to have a discussion as a council and identify key, no more than three policy areas that are of importance, not just to our city, but to all the cities across the county so that the Mayors and Council Members Association can work to take action on those items in the year to come. With that, I will turn, I will look to my colleagues for ideas. I will certainly emphasize that discussions are the issue of homeless services funding. And Measure O monies, Measure O monies was the catalyst for this conversation. I would assume that continues to be of interest to us. But during our discussion tonight, if there are other items like that that really have broad-based interest at a city level, we can highlight those and then raise them again at the meeting on the 22nd. Ms. McDonald.
I think with the current concerns around water and some of the issues that we're having around the dams, and I'm hearing a lot of conversations around that, we might need to work together on some of those issues. So I think that should be a priority as well.
That's an excellent example of an issue that is being handled with all the water agencies right now. So there are other bodies that are dealing with that pretty directly that involve all the cities. But I've written that down, or we've all taken note of that. If there are other items like that that aren't being pushed forward in other forums, that's really what mayors and council members wish us to address. Mr. Ocrepki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think based on our previous discussion, maybe a little more clarity about the service level and costs of the ambulance contract, not just to Santa Rosa, but at other municipalities.
I've taken note of that. That's a good suggestion. Other ideas?
Sales tax caps and how the state is going to respond to increasing demand on that type of revenue measure.
Good suggestion. Ms. Benwellos.
Along the lines of what Councilmember Ocrepki said, emergency services, disaster trainings, those things, I think. I know, I think I've talked to city manager about this. The, probably the fact that, you know, the LA fires kind of reminded us that we've been through that as well. And, you know, now we've gotten a little bit complacent. And, you know, where are we at as a region on that issue?
Are you suggesting something like an audit of the county's emergency response protocols?
Something along that line, or just what are we all doing in that area? And how can we work together to?
Coordination.
Yeah, yeah.
Good thought. Other ideas? I'll add an out-of-the-box one. There's an issue right now in, across the state of California with respect to a lack of insurance availability for developers who wish to develop condominium projects. And in cities like Santa Rosa, condominium projects can be an important step on the housing ladder. So this has actually been raised at other mayors and council members' meetings. I'll throw it on the table for this group in case that's of interest. We don't need to belabor this all evening. If there are other, any other ideas off the top of people's heads? All right, then I'll look for, Mr. Ocrepki, I'm going to turn this over to you. We have at least four ideas. We've got homelessness services slash Measure O. We've got emergency, coordination of emergency services countywide. We've got the issue of sales tax, the sales tax cap that is affecting at least a few cities in the county. And it will be likely to affect more as the years roll on. And then we've got the issue of developers not being able to receive insurance for condominium projects in the county. And with respect to the water issue, I guess the question I would have there is, given that there are multiple countywide bodies that involve the cities that are pushing that issue forward, most particularly WAC-TAC, which has been all over this issue, is there a particular way that you think that mayors and council members could address this in a different or more effective way?
No, I'm not sure that that's, that would be more effective. If you think that there's a body that already handles some of this, then I'd be fine with that, taking that off the list.
Our colleague, Ms. Rogers, is doing an excellent job pushing that issue forward as our WAC... Ms. Fleming?
Can I ask a procedural question?
Please.
The body of mayors and council members is going to select three issues?
Say that again.
The body of mayors and council members is going to select three issues to focus on, ideally?
Correct. So all the cities, you'll have nine cities coming to the table on the 22nd, and they will present the items that their council has authorized their board member to present. And then that board will aggregate or decide from among those items with the expectation that a few of the items are really going to float to the top as being of top interest for all the cities.
So then there, if we only submit three items, it's clear that not every city would submit the same three items. So then we would not all have, you know, I guess what I'm asking is, is more better? In the sense, if we have four, or five, or six, then each city would like essentially have a dot. And then you could see which cities vote for the most of them, right?
So to keep things manageable, we were asked to, or the cities were asked to nominate no more than three?
Okay, so you guys will not be focusing on three issues. You'll be focusing on maybe one, if not two, just from a logistical perspective.
In terms of how it works, it may well, it may well turn out like that.
Okay. Well, I think that you may want to take the entire list because it could be the case that we don't get consensus amongst nine cities. It's kind of a flaw in the planning here. But best of luck to you.
I will take your critique back to Gerard Judice. And let him know that you discovered a flaw. But with respect to our group right here, do, I've got all four in my head. I can probably sneak one in. I'll do my best. But if we had to choose three among this list, what would be the top three? Which I find kind of an interesting exercise just for our group. Ms. Rogers.
I think homeless services and Measure O has continually been a big one. And I'll also add with that, not just discussing that, but the transparency about what is going on with the funds that are currently available and where those funds are going. I think that's been something that's been a concern even when I was doing mayor and council members, so.
I would certainly concur. Am I seeing a thumbs up and a straw pull across the dais here that that's our top issue? You know, I can, I think I can make this a little bit easier for us too. Because again, at MCA, the main focus for this year is our partnership with the county. So finding issues where you've got county control over the issue. So as much as I love my own condominium insurance suggestion, that's really a state-level issue, as is the sales tax. So we could go with the top two and have the other two in my back pocket.
I would really like to put the ambulance contract in there.
Agreed, agreed. So you have, you have, oh, so you got ambulance contract. You've got coordination of emergency services. Are we combining those, or are they separate?
I'd say those are very separate.
I would try to slip it in as one.
I will use the Diana McDonald negotiating strategy when I'm at the table.
I think you can. I'll give it to you.
All right, do I, do we have a motion here that those are our top three?
Sure. All right. After discussion, I'll make a motion to prioritize Measure O slash homeless services money, the ambulance contract, and what was the third?
Coordination of emergency services.
Coordination of emergency services and readiness.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk?
Would you like to take public comment?
Oh, yes, I would. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak? Mr. DeWitt? We'll start with Mr. DeWitt and then go on to Ms. Carmen.
My name is Dwayne DeWitt. I'm from Roseland. Thank you for this discussion that you're having. And I do hope that, based on what was said earlier with the gentleman from the ambulance discussion, that you'll look into the coordinated fire services, especially overlap. I don't know if any of you caught that he mentioned the fire station on Todd Road. That's been there longer than almost any of the others around because they have their own district. And yet, during the time that you were discussing putting a new fire station on Hearn Avenue, it was rarely discussed that that fire station is just down the road a mile. So having these overlaps and finding a way in which to cut your costs with more efficiency would be very helpful for the public to understand, especially because they're the taxpayers that underwrite this. And you're looking into perhaps trying to raise the sales tax cap. There's a lot of folks don't want any more taxes. I think this is an excellent time for you folks to be in front of that parade and say, "Let's cut costs, bring more efficiency into it, and explain how we're going to have coordinated fire services and a lot less overlap." Thank you kindly.
Thank you, Dwayne. Ms. Carmen?
Is the microphone on? Yeah, you can hear it. I would like to know a lot more about the, I may have it backwards, the EFID. I was present at the county when they were trying to make the adoption of it. And I think it was getting on the ballot at the time. It was in Fall of '23. And it's a development situation with economic development. And it's just not real clear. And I keep asking questions about it, and I kind of get one-liner responses. But the city budget is so much smaller than the county budget. And it is something that they do somehow together. And I'd like to know how that plays in. And I'd like to know how that plays in to the rest of the contracts and other things that you do. And just recently, I was at the finance meeting for the city, and it, something came out of there on, I think it was the 8th of this month. They just wrote whatever they wrote, and I haven't gotten all that paperwork yet. But it's real important, I think, and I think the public should know something about it, and we should have a feel for what's going on and how it's affecting the other services. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Would any other members of the public like to speak? All right, now we can, we have a, we can bring it back to council. We've got a motion and a second. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Ocrepki?
Aye.
Councilmember McDonald?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Benuelos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alvarez?
Aye.
Mayor Stapp?
Yes.
This passes unanimously.
Thank you. We're going to go, we're going to, we'll skip over item 12. We have no minutes to approve. We move on to item 13, consent. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 13.1, motion, contract award, garage hoist purchase and installation. Item 13.2, resolution, delegation of authority to certain staff to execute project work orders issued under existing master, excuse me, master professional services agreement. Item 13.3, resolution, authorization to participate in PG&E EV fleet program for development of battery electric vehicle charging infrastructure. Item 13.4, resolution, approval, second amendment to the blanket purchase order 169264 to extend the term one year and increase compensation with Iris Group Holdings LLC, DBA Everon LLC. Item 13.5, resolution, approval of amendment to blanket purchase order 164204A to extend the term and increase compensation with Geotab USA Incorporated. Item 13.6, resolution, approval of grant easement to Pacific Gas and Electric Company over a portion of city-owned property located at 705th Street, APN 009-012-025. Item 13.7, resolution, amendment to professional service agreement number F002302 with Bureau Veritas North America Incorporated for Fire Code Plan Review Services. Item 13.8, resolution, approval of professional service agreement updating community wildfire protection plan. Item 13.9, resolution, bid award, general service agreement for city roadway landscape services with Brightview Landscape Services Incorporated. Item 13.10, resolution, authorizing a resolution of local support for the filing of an application for funding assigned to the Metropolitan Transportation Commission for master planning and design of the Santa Rosa Southeast Greenway and committing any necessary matching funds and stating assurance to complete the project. Item 13.11, resolution, amending council policy 000-06, appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Item 13.12, resolution, administrative cost recovery lien against the real property located at 2100 Sebastopol Road. Item 13.13, resolution, approval of grant easement, pardon me, approval of grant of easement to County of Sonoma over a portion of city property located at 5565 Pine Flat Road, APN 131-150-029. Item 13.14, resolution, first amendment to the professional service agreement with Spectrum K9 Isabel LLC.
Thank you. Bringing it back to council. Are there any questions? Opening it up for public comment. Would any members of the public like to speak on any of the consent items? So, is it Bailey?
Yes.
Bailey, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Bailey Hurley. I am a lifelong resident of Santa Rosa and a student at Credo High School. I wanted to bring up 13.3. While I agree with the idea of more electric vehicles, I have some concerns. Earlier this year in Monterey, a lithium battery plant caught fire, spewing all kinds of harmful pollutants into the surrounding water, air, and soil. Many residents also reported feeling sick as a result. The impacts of this incident were great, to say the least. I bring this up because with this program, more electric vehicles mean more batteries, which in turn mean more potential for an incident like this to happen again. I wanted to ask what the city is planning on doing to address this and urge some sort of action to prevent more damage from happening in the future.
Thank you, Bailey. Mr. DeWitt?
My name is Dwayne DeWitt. I'm from Roseland. 13.8, it's very important that the wildfire protection plan also look into riparian corridors. There's lots of trees along those corridors, and that's where many transient vagrants happen to stay and use campfires. They also use them over in the Roseland neighborhood. There are many people who live nearby there that are quite concerned about the fires that have happened there in the past and are worried that more fires will happen. The city, in a sense, could become liable if a campfire on its public land spreads into a fire that then goes to the houses. Hughes Avenue and McMinn Avenue specifically are at risk, and there could be vicarious liability for the city. With that in mind, as you have this contract worked up, please make sure that these people know about that area and make sure that they look into a way for good wildfire protection around that Roseland Creek riparian corridor. Then on 13.10, as you're putting together the idea for the master planning of the Southeast Greenway, please make sure they look into housing along that greenway. When a design studio at University of California, Berkeley College of Environmental Design went forward with a plan for free that they gave to the proponents of this project, they pointed out that housing is a safety measure, that it would help to have eyes on the prize, if you will. So housing along the greenway in as many spots as possible also helps with the affordability crisis that we keep having to renew the emergency declaration about that housing affordability. So you have these opportunities with these two items coming forward under contract in which you can point out to the new contractee that they will be given a higher efficiency rating, if you will, if they'll help us to solve these issues. The protection of wildfire areas along riparian corridors and the protection along greenways for public safety due to the fact that so many transient vagrants use these bike paths and greenways as camping areas, and that could easily begin to happen over in the Southeast Greenway area. They might not think that they're prone to that, but believe me, neither did the folks along the Joe or Dodo Trail. And it just gets started, and you don't get a chance to stop it. Thank you kindly for your time.
Thanks, Dwayne. Ms. Carmen?
Thank you. Hi, Janice Carmen. I want to rewind back to 13.3. That was one that raised a red flag with me, and I'd like to see that one tabled for its own discussion at a future time. And I've been looking at a lot of these fires, and all they can do is let them burn out because they're so hot, they can't even put them out, from what I've been seeing. And it really is a threat and a worry. And I don't think that you should just okay it when it's in the body of work that's, I don't know how many she read, a lot, she should be out of breath by now. But of all of these, I feel like it's something that, like, you know, the Congress, like, they get some weird thing in there that everybody goes, oh, how did that happen? And I think this is one of those. How did that happen? So I hope that you can prevent it and like slow it down a little bit and maybe make it something that is something that people really research and look at before they agree and approve it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. Would any other members of the public like to speak? Bringing it back to council then. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to put motions 13.1 through 13.14, with exception of 13.9 as requested by Councilmember McDonald, and wait further reading of the text.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. McDonald. Madam City Clerk, whenever you're ready.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Ocrepki?
Aye.
Councilmember McDonald?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Benuelos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alvarez?
Aye.
Mayor Stapp?
Aye.
Let the record show, those passes, those pass unanimously.
And following that, I'd like to put motion 13.9, and also wait further reading of the text.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second by Ms. Rogers.
Thank you. Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Ocrepki?
Aye.
Councilmember McDonald has recused. Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Benuelos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alvarez?
Aye.
Mayor Stapp?
Aye.
Let the record show, that passes with six affirmative votes.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to item 15.1, our report on the extension of Santa Rosa City Bus Unlimited Rides for Youth Program.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Stapp and members of the council. I'm pleased to be here tonight to present on our proposed extension of the Santa Rosa City Bus Unlimited Rides for Youth Program. Begin with just a quick overview, background of the program. As you may recall, we initiated the program in July 2021 as part of our COVID recovery strategy for the transit system. We had seen transit ridership fall off dramatically during the pandemic and particularly among youth while school was remote and a lot of youth-serving activities were closed. We also saw this as a strategy to assist the community with economic recovery, recognizing that many of our riders in the city bus system are low-income families. And with school restarting in the fall, there could be difficulty with bus fare, bus passes as kids return to in-person school. The program was very successful right out of the gate, so we did come back to council in late 2022, asking for a six-month extension to look for longer-term funding for the program. We were able to then work with Sonoma County Transit and Petaluma Transit to seek funding from the Sonoma County Climate Resilience Fund, which did award funding for a two-year extension through June of 2025, and also expanded the program to include the two other transit systems, making fare-free youth rides available throughout the county of Sonoma. Some program goals that we had laid out at the very beginning are in the blue box here. You guys are well aware of this. Increased transit ridership, reduced household expenses for families. We also thought, based on experience with other fare-free-for-youth programs, that we could see improvements in school attendance, and we did have some evidence of that based on survey results. And we also thought it would be a great way to increase transit's profile within the community and rebuild that culture of transit use among youth following the pandemic. And of course, anything we do to improve transit affordability is a great move towards transportation equity. We did see some additional outcomes that we were really pleased with. Our survey results showed that youth were using this program for accessing many other parts of the community, not just school. Over 50% of our respondents stated that they were using the fare-free-for-youth program to get to many other places such as work, after-school activities, visiting friends and relatives, et cetera. 78% of our survey respondents indicated that their households had reduced their car trips as a result of the program, which indicated to us that this program is also having some success with mode shift. Another great outcome was some new partnerships we had with schools, individual school sites, with school district programs such as the Extended Summer Youth School Year Program, summer camps such as the City Wreck and Park Department summer camps and other youth-serving programs. They've been making great use of this program to teach kids how to use transit and take them out on field trips and other activities throughout the community using the transit system. So that's been a great additional outcome. And one thing we're particularly proud of is the expansion of the program to additional operators. You know, we kind of stuck our neck out in 2021 trying this new thing. We weren't sure how we were going to keep it funded. We weren't sure how it would work out, but to see that program then be extended to Sonoma County Transit, Petaluma Transit, and now we, of course, also have Smart offering free fares for youth. It's a pretty unique situation in Sonoma County to have commuter rail and all the local bus systems to be fare-free for youth, and that's not common around the country, and it's something that we're all collectively really proud of as transit operators. In terms of ridership, the program has vastly exceeded our expectations. Before the pandemic, we were carrying about 200,000 youth rides a year. That obviously plummeted during COVID, but within three months of starting this program in 2021, we had returned to pre-COVID youth ridership levels, and the program has continued to grow in every year since then. We expect to carry about 450,000 youth rides in the current fiscal year. So we've seen a 125% increase in youth ridership over the past four years, and that's something you just don't see in transit. It's very unusual to see that kind of ridership growth, which I think for us just really speaks to the need in the community and the value the program has for youth and families. So our proposal here today is to extend the program through fiscal 2030, subject to continued funding availability. And the funding program we're proposing includes two key elements. Beginning in fiscal '26, we will have access to an increment of GoSonoma sales tax funds that are specifically identified in the expenditure plan for fare-free transit programs. The City of Santa Rosa's share of that is estimated at about $220,000, which we would apply towards this program. And we would complement that with about $300,000 in low-carbon transit operation program funding, or LC TOP funds. And LC TOP is a really unique program. It's the only state or federal funding program that we can actually use for fare-free transit programs. In the past few years, we've been using it in our electrification program for transit, but at this point, that program's pretty well-funded, where we could really use the resources in the operating budget and to keep a good program going. So we expect that this funding strategy is solid through fiscal 2030. The LC TOP program is currently authorized through 2030, and efforts are already underway to reauthorize it beyond that date. But we think because it is a formula-based program and the GoSonoma sales tax funds are also formula-funded, this would be a solid approach for the next five years. So with that, we are recommending that the council, by resolution, extend the Unlimited Rides for Youth program for TK through 12th grade youth through June 30th, 2030, subject to ongoing funding availability. And I'm happy to take any questions council may have.
Thank you very much, Director. What a great program. Bringing it back to council for questions. All right, well, I'm going to ask one. And with apologies in advance, it's going to be a slightly, it's, I don't want to pour any cold water over what's just a fabulous program. I mean, you can see the numbers here, the fact that we've got this many, this many young people taking this many rides, supporting public transportation. I certainly enjoy seeing the students on the bus when, when my wife and I are riding. I should ask, though, I feel compelled to ask, just because I've heard enough bus riders mention that sometimes the students and the kids can be a handful. And that when, when they head back to school in the fall, the bus drivers breathe a sigh of relief. And so I guess my question is, we absolutely want students and young people to be on the bus. We don't want to be creating headaches for our bus drivers and driving them, driving them nuts. Are there strategies in place to manage the youth ridership?
Yeah, that's a great question, and one that I almost included in the presentation, so I'm glad you asked it. Yeah, we have had some issues with behavior with a very small segment of our youth ridership. I think we all recognize the vast majority of youth in our community are, are doing what they need to do and following the rules, but we do have issues. These are teenagers. So we've developed over the course of the program some really strong partnerships, and we've had great partnership from the individual school sites. When we have issues with specific students, and it, it could be behavior issues on the bus, you know, sometimes they try to vape, sometimes they might tag.
It's the stink bombs in particular.
What's that?
It's the stink bombs in particular, like the one that went off during one of the bus trips that my wife and I were on.
Oh, you were on that trip. Okay, good to know.
Oh, good. Is it, is it part of lore in the county now or in the city?
There's a bit of lore, yes.
That was an interesting trip.
So, yeah, so we, you know, we have great cameras on all of our buses. Every bus has eight cameras on it. They're very high-def. We can identify the students working with the schools. The schools have been great about following up with individual students and taking the necessary action to respond. If we've had a more significant issue, we've also worked really closely with the Violence Prevention Program and SRPD when necessary, when there's something that rises to that level. But for the most part, the issues we've had are very addressable at the school site. I should also say, one other thing we're looking at in the future is potentially shifting this program to the Clipper Card System as the next-generation Clipper System comes online. That would be a little bit of a challenge in terms of distribution, but it does create a little bit of accountability to have a card that's actually being tapped, you know, as you get on and off the bus. And so we think that's another strategy we could use to just help, you know, help provide some accountability around behavior. But I will, I will say, I think we've developed a good way of managing what goes on. I know there's sometimes headaches for the bus operators, but you also ride trips and you see youth being very respectful and polite and thanking the driver all the time. So, you know, I think that's the bulk.
So, you know, I think that's the bulk of the users.
That's absolutely true. And thank you for walking through all of the mitigation methods that are mitigation options that are being put into place. Those sound great. No more questions from me. Well, now there's a question, Ms. Fleming.
No, I have a question now. What do we do with the adults who misbehave on the buses? Because I have heard about them. I'm just kidding, but I do think that people across all age spectrums misbehave. And that I know, you know, another group of people who has free bus rides is Santa Rosa City employees, so.
They're very well behaved, I'll just admit that.
I know, I know. We have great, wonderfully behaved folks, but I just want to make sure that we don't disincentivize young people to ride, and that we help educate them.
And in answer to your question, I mean, we had that issue as well with adults, and more with adults than youth in some cases. So we have adopted a code of conduct in the last couple of years for city bus, and we never actually had an adopted formal code of conduct pre-COVID. But in the aftermath of COVID, we found it was really necessary to establish clear rules and consequences for behavior issues. And so through that code of conduct, we have the ability to suspend riders from the system if needed. And we have used that a couple of times, and we've found it's very effective to get people's attention that they need to alter their behavior. For the most part, our team is very skilled at de-escalating and getting people back on track with their behavior, because the bus is something they really do need. But yeah, it's an ongoing, just as with some of the youth, where we need to follow up with the individuals specifically to address the behavior. We have the same approach with adults.
Right. I mean, I have great concern about folks, you know, in this post-COVID era, you know, across all the age spectrums, learning how to interact with each other and behave in ways that support all of our communities. And so, thank you. I know probably an average bus operator doesn't sign up to do that role of educating our community, and so I'm grateful to them for all that they put into this. It's really, the proof is in the ridership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Here, here. All right, we'll open it up to public comment. Would any members of the public like to comment on this item? Seeing none, bringing it back to council for a motion. Is that you, Ms. Fleming? Oops, excuse me, one more. Mr. Ocrepki, you had a comment? Oh, Ms. Rogers, apologies. Do both of you have comments? Mr. Ocrepki, you may begin, then Ms. Rogers.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I think this is great. The slide on ridership and the increase is phenomenal as we try to adjust the mentality of people and the modes of transportation they use. It's great to see that. And unlike our cloud-yelling mayor, I was once one of those kids that rode the city bus home from Slater every day, and most of us were very well-behaved. And I believe it's public transportation that a lot of us use that has framed our mindset as to what kind of modes of transportation we prefer to use today.
Thank you so much. Ms. Rogers.
I just wanted to commend the drivers, because I know that there are challenging people, period. But today, we're talking about the youth that take public transportation and just the way that they work with them, and not just saying like, "Oh, you did this, you're getting kicked off the bus," but actually working with them and developing mutual respect. And I think that goes a long way with our youth. So I do want to thank and commend the drivers for, someone that has eight kids, their patience, which I know probably runs very thin sometimes, but they're doing a great job. So please pass that along to them.
Thank you so much, I will. I appreciate that.
Ms. McDonald.
My sentiments are, along with my colleagues, that I really appreciate the work and definitely the bus drivers. I mean, I had three teenage boys myself, but I was able to self-medicate with a bottle of Chardonnay when they misbehaved, and we don't want our drivers doing that. So I want to say thank you to them for all that they do. I want to also thank you for the work that goes into coordinating bus times to get the kids to school on time. There's so much data around the importance of them getting to school and not missing that first 10 minutes, making sure that they're there for attendance and the importance of that. So I just want to say thank you to you and your team. I know that there's been some work with that on the coordination. I'm really proud of our youth to use public transportation and be able to coordinate that and get themselves to the bus on time. And so just thank you to you and your team, and keep up the great work. And I'm definitely in support of this. Thanks.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Well, just a quick public service announcement that city residents, including council members, are not allowed to self-medicate while riding the bus. But we're glad it all worked out for you. And with...
I actually, I think that public transportation is there exactly for that.
But we did. Just a final note, I'm glad my colleagues brought this up. The bus drivers are fantastic. They've got a tough job. Please pass along our compliments. And with that, Ms. Fleming, we're over to you.
Okay. So we'll move a resolution of the council of the City of Santa Rosa approving the extension of the Santa Rosa City Bus Unlimited Rides for Youth "You Are Free" program, and waive further reading of the text.
Second.
We have a motion, and then a second by Ms. Rogers.
Thank you, Councilmember Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Ocrepki.
Aye.
Councilmember McDonald.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Benwellos.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Alvarez.
Aye.
Mayor Stapp.
Aye.
Let the record show this passes unanimously.
Thank you. We are going to move on to item 15.2, our report item on the approval of an agreement for school resource officers between the City of Santa Rosa and Santa Rosa City Schools District.
Yeah, Mayor, we have a few changes. I just want to remind Rachel on that last item. She wanted to pull it off of consent, so next time I bet you'll, you know, keep it on consent.
Lesson learned, Rachel. Thank you, though.
So for the SRO presentation, I wanted to clarify that there's going to be some changes. We originally had the MOU also outlines a shared commitment to discuss and negotiate cost sharing. That is not going to be discussed in this presentation. We've made some changes to the resolution as well. So this is only going to be to accept and approve the MOU. We wanted to make certain that we brought it forward. This is something that we normally would not bring forward, but there was a lot of work done on the committees between all the working committee and the three-by-three. We thought it was best to bring this forward to council. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor Stapp. I'm John Griege, the Santa Rosa Chief of Police, and I'm joined tonight by Sergeant Matt Crosby, who's really our resident SRO expert for the City of Santa Rosa and the Police Department. He worked not only as an SRO, but was part of the original ad hoc committee of the 32 members who examined this issue and has stayed really abreast as our school liaison. So I'm out of a turnover, and he was a key part of helping us develop this MOU with our city leaders and the Santa Rosa City Schools. He'll provide a quick, high-level overview of it, and then we can talk about any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Chief. Good to see everybody here this afternoon. I'm happy to present to you the SRO agreement that we have worked very diligently on over the last, let's say, couple of years now. And with that, I'll just give you some context and overview of where we've been as a police department in regards to the SR program and kind of where we are today. So real quickly, the SRO mission is that the school resource officers of the Santa Rosa Police Department are dedicated to collaborating with the Santa Rosa school districts to ensure a safe learning environment, provide valuable resources to school, staff, and youth to prevent and dissolve problems within the school and community, and to foster relationships between the youth and police officers of our department. So again, just a real brief summary of where our program's been. We have a 25-year footprint here in the City of Santa Rosa as school resource officers. The inception of the program dates back to 1996, and at that time, there was one dedicated school resource officer to Santa Rosa City Schools. And really, over the next decade, that program, due to its success, grew. It grew to a total of five dedicated SROs to each of our main high schools and feeder schools, and one dedicated supervising sergeant. Part of the background in terms of how we train and our philosophy behind the school resource officers within our schools is this concept that was designed by NASRO, which is the National Association of School Resource Officers. And it's a triad concept that really focuses on officers in schools being teachers, counselors, obviously law enforcement component to that. And at the heart of it all, really, a mentor to youth in our city. So the City of Santa Rosa, it's important to point out, just to give more context to how the school districts are designed. The Santa Rosa City School District is the largest district within our community. But it's also fair to point out that there's other school districts that encompass other parts of the city: Bellevue, Bennett Valley, Union, Piner Olivet, Rinca Valley, Roseland, and Wright Union School Districts. When we look at Santa Rosa City Schools specifically, we talk about 23 schools made up of more than 14,000 students, nine elementary, four charter schools, four middle schools, a continuation school, and our five main high schools, which are Montgomery, Piner, Santa Rosa, Elsie Allen, and Maria Creo. Historically, SROs have participated in a number of events through contract services. Those include football games, basketball games, school dances such as prom, a graduation, project graduation, and open house nights every year at schools. So most recently, when we go back to the year 2020 to present, what happened in 2020 was the existing memorandum of understanding between SRPD and Santa Rosa City Schools expired at that time. And I think we all remember, at that same time, there were a couple of other significant events that took place. One was obviously the COVID-19 pandemic and the death of George Floyd that led to really a national conversation around policing and specifically SROs on school campuses. And in June 2020, there was a debate about SROs continuing and renewing our MOU at that time. And it was during this time period with the Santa Rosa School District that they voted seven to oh to pause the program. And it's fair to point out at this time that we were in the middle of distant learning, so there were no students currently on campus at that time. So in July 2020, there was further discussion about bringing together an ad hoc committee. And really, it was a joint operation between Santa Rosa City Schools and the Police Department. And really, the objective was to evaluate the program moving forward and to look at it among three different components. And really, the idea was evaluated as, do we continue the program currently in its form? Do we continue the program with modifications on how we can improve and make it even better? Or do we just discontinue the program altogether? A 32-member committee consisting of multiple stakeholders around the community, and there were teachers, parents, students themselves, and us on the Police Department represented this group. And in the end, 30 of the 32 members voted to continue the program with modifications. The Police Department voted in alignment with that agreement. In the end of 2020, December 14, again, the school boards follow up regarding this pause in the program was one in which they sent a letter to the then-city manager, the then-chief of police, and the then-superintendent to talk specifically further about this modification process and where we move from here. And from there, it's fair to note, too, that the Police Department, the chief of police at the time, shared the passion to continue the program and our desire to continue to work within the schools. And during the year 2021, '22, we saw a number of challenges. We saw the return of in-person teaching and learning. And with that, we saw the increase in fights, weapons on campus, behavioral issues, threats and violence. And more importantly, we saw an increase in mental health. And a lot of that was due to the, you know, just the return of in-person learning and that sort of thing. And it's fair to note that that wasn't specific to our jurisdiction. This was something that was consistent around the United States at the time. So we started to notice and see, specifically within the Police Department, just how the lack of SROs on campus started to really present some challenges. The challenges really were focused around really responding from our distance and not being as proactive as we once were, being embedded within the schools. And, you know, we started to see that we were losing some of that informal counseling, getting out in front of issues that were occurring and just kind of highlighting the importance of giving the resources in a timely manner and in an efficient manner. Here you have a snapshot of data that we were able to collect from 2022 through 2024. This represents a three-year snapshot. And these are all the schools that are consisted within the Santa Rosa School District. You can see that primarily the calls for service that are in higher volume focus primarily around the high schools. However, there's calls for service all the way down through the feeder schools and elementary schools as well. The total number are in excess of 3,700 calls for service. They consist of a variety of calls from welfare checks to battery reports, threat investigations, vandalism, trespassing. But I think what's important to highlight is that we've had some violent incidents on our campuses. And those consist of four separate stabbing incidents among our high schools and also the recovery of four additional loaded firearms on separate occasions at our high school level. I think we remember in March 23, '23, the tragic incident that happened on Montgomery High School where a student lost their life due to an incident in the classroom involving a stabbing. It was really during this time that we saw the community kind of rally together and calls to re-establish an SRO program really intensified by parents, teachers, and the community. So in response to all this, in February 2024, there was a formation of additional committees. There was a three-by-three committee, which consisted of joint leadership among Santa Rosa City Council and Santa Rosa School Board members. And additionally, alongside that was a working group of 13 community members. The chief and I were fortunate enough to serve among that group. And really, we were tasked with looking further into a memorandum of understanding if, in fact, we were to bring back school resource officers on campus and really gain the perspective and background of everyone who was involved in that process. And so some of the highlights of what we talked about from a higher level were just safety, equity, training, defined roles and responsibilities, all of which we were able to go through. And so these are some of the shared components that we talked about continuing the program with modifications. And these are some of the things that we, as a group, came up with. A shared vision and a unified commitment to safe and inclusive schools for all students. And really, a holistic approach that supports the emotional and physical well-being of all students on campus. Really, a strong partnership, a partnership that's grounded in trust and transparency and an open dialogue about what this MOU looks like, how can we best serve students and staff on each campus, shared accountability within that transparency, just being able to problem-solve together and encourage that ongoing collaboration with one another. And how we share information was another topic that came up. How to re-protect the privacy rights of students. And this was a big part of it, which was the clear separation of administrative duties and law enforcement duties. We had a lot of concerns about officers being weaponized in a school district to escalate how behavior occurs every day on campus. And really, we really spoke real hard-heartedly about, you know, how that looks and the distinct roles that come up every day on campus, from administrative to anything that would involve the law enforcement. And it's fair to note in these discussions historically that 99% of all discipline on campus is handled administratively and that our law enforcement role really makes up less than 1% of that. And promoting safety, you know, there's obviously this was an outcry by the public about what safety looks like on our campuses. What are the roles of SROs? How do we help better support staff and students themselves? This shows up in training, preparedness, restorative justice practices, trauma-informed approaches to how we can best support students and staff on campus. And so we talked a lot about this. And part of this component was we talked about multi-level behavioral threat assessment teams, all of which are important in the new trend that we see across the United States that has been embedded in law that really not just asks for this, but requires this. And law enforcement plays not only a part in that, but an ongoing, everyday part in that team. And then the SRO selection and training. We talked a lot about not just what our training looks like currently as school resource, as officers that work the street, but what other additional training can we develop, become involved in that involves trauma-informed care, adolescent development, understanding youth and understanding behaviors? And how does that play into restorative justice? And how do we work collaboratively? And what resources are available? And we went on and on and we dove really deep into this process, which is an important process and conversation to have. We talked about shared training, not just for officers, but with school staff themselves and how we can best work together moving forward. And then in March, most recently, 2025, the three-by-three committee met again. We were able to give the recommendation of this MOU that was agreed upon as a result of this working group. And on March 25th of this year, the school board held a special meeting where they were able to pass the MOU that we have tonight for three years that was agreed upon by all parties. And then in the end here, we talk a little bit about, and this is going to be one of the challenges with this program and given the budget constraints going on right now, this is again going to be a challenge. You know, the cost it's going to take to have five SROs and a sergeant every year is going to run out of costs of about $2.1 million for the first year. And that would encompass a lot of the startup costs. And then the ongoing annual costs of somewhere between $1.7 million. And so with that, there hasn't been any formal talks about how that looks right now going forward. We're here to just kind of present the memorandum of, the MOU that has been agreed upon. And with that, I'd like to read this recommendation. It's recommended by the Police Department that the council by resolution approve an agreement for the school resource officers between Santa Rosa City, Santa Rosa Police Department and Santa Rosa City Schools to relaunch the SRO program. And two, to delegate authority to the city manager to execute the agreement, subject to approval as to form by the city attorney. With that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Chief Krieger. And thank you, Sergeant Crosby, for all of your work, not just on this presentation, but in bringing us to this moment. And thank you to council members Rogers, Ocrepki and McDonald. There were a lot of hours that you spent as part of that three-by-three. So thank you all for your time. Bringing it back to council for questions. Any questions on this item today? Ms. McDonald?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I just want to say thank you to all of you and as well as the POA for working on the MOU to make sure that the language was clear that was brought forward and that the time that they took to go through all of this has been significant, so I appreciate it. Just reading through the hours that we've spent and actually the call volume, I think you said that there was 1,172 calls in 2024 for service in the school. So if I was to break that down, there's usually 180 days in a school year, divide that by weeks, about 36 weeks. So we're tracking about 33, 34 calls a week at our schools. Is that right? About five or six a day going to schools? If I'm, if I'm calculating this right?
Yes, and to clarify, we narrowed that down to just Santa Rosa City Schools. So that doesn't count. Roseland doesn't count, all the other districts that we went through. So the SROs play a key role of also helping with some of the other feeder districts like that. So with all schools in Santa Rosa in 2024, it was 1,772 with all districts within the city limits. Specifically just Santa Rosa Schools was the 1,100 number that you have.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So if we were to have SROs on campus, do you believe that the call volume of assistance through our Police Department would go down? Do you have any data on that?
We can go back and look at the call volume on the years that we had an SRO program. And we have that data and we can be able to present. What we see anonymously, and Sergeant Crosby can speak directly of it from his time there, is that when the officers on campus were not seeing some of the outbreaks of violence, we're not seeing some of these things. But also they can work more collaboratively with the district. Where I see as chief to, it's not diverting a resource from the street. So right now you have a patrol officer who's also responding to domestic violences and sexual assaults and everything else across the city who is diverted now to go on the school campus. They're not as familiar with the school campus. So for me, I'd rather have the more highly-trained resource that's carefully selected to be on that school campus, handle those and let patrol officers, detectives and others focus on their core responsibilities across the city.
You led me into the next question I have. It's really around the training and what the officers that are specifically chosen to do the SRO program. You mentioned restorative justice, you mentioned de-escalation. And we know that all SRPD are highly-trained officers. But is there anything that sets apart specifically an SRO that's on a campus that the other officers might not have the opportunity to go through?
That's one of the things that, and we heard a lot of like criticism about the SRO program and we saw the closure of it. And one of my goals as chief to embrace some of that constructive criticism and say, hey, how can we hear this? How can we get better? And I feel very confident, the new relaunched SRO program, when we get there one day, when we find the funding, we're able to launch this program, it's going to be a major improvement from what existed in 2020. And part of that is some multifaceted, but part of it is the careful selection of an SRO with it. Quite frankly, not every officer is designed to be a great SRO. And so we need to work collaboratively with the schools, with the administration of the Police Department and with our team to select the right officer to be able to go that. Secondly, is really giving them an enhanced training. So we work very closely with that working group of over 15 different classes that we have of training about understanding the adolescent brain, of working with youth, de-escalation, implicit bias, procedural justice. The list goes on and on and on of specific training that we're going to have. So not only carefully selected, but much more enhanced training so they thrive in that environment within the school. And then making sure that by having the dedicated sergeant, that the dedicated sergeant is looking at the supervision, the accountability, hearing the feedback. And then we built in some creative ideas to be able to look at like the students and staff, parents filling out a survey every year so we can constantly be evaluating. Because we really feel like we got it right. But quite honestly, this is just the first step in the journey. We're going to continue to evaluate that, hear the feedback. And overwhelmingly heard feedback about what are the arrests made on the campuses, what's the accountability, the transparency on that? So we developed a quarterly portal, which is going to be both on the school website and on the Police Department website. So you can look at parents, teachers, community, city leaders can look at what were the arrests made? What were, and we'll break it down by race, by age, by charge, whether it was initiated by school or officer and so many of those things. So we're going to have so much more where our community can really see what's really going on with the SRO program than we had before.
That's what I was going to ask you too, chief. Did we have all that data that we were tracking prior to this specific kind of MOU?
We didn't share it publicly at that time. So that'll be something that changes dramatically. We can go back with our crime analyst team and pull all data and these things like that. So we're able to do that. What we're doing now is a dramatic change of really being able to capture that data, share it publicly and not only to inform. And I think what the community is going to see is that a trained SRO actually makes less arrests than a random patrol officer being assigned to the scene because they get to know the students, they get to know the culture of the school and they get to really get to focus from starting with me as the chief on like a focus on restorative justice models. We now have a restorative justice program that didn't exist in 2020 that we have a contract with or an MOU with dot RJ with it. And that's our youth program that defers them away from the criminal justice system. So that's going to be another tool in the tool belt of our SROs today.
Can you talk me through just a little bit around how they develop the relationships on the campus and why that's so effective to have this type of model versus an officer just coming in off the street to assist?
Yeah, and I'll let Sergeant Crosby tell about some of his personal experience with that with some of the relationships. But we saw that after the travesty at Montgomery High School and Officer Luigi Valencia, and he was able to go in. And he's certainly a rare breed and the kids refer to him as the unicorn of, that he was such a unique officer in his skillset. But really was able to build that. And I'll let Sergeant Crosby talk because he worked as an SRO at Santa Rosa High and was able to go through some of the adversities there. I was there on the day that we had a shooting at Ridgeway where our student shot another student out front of the school. And then just weeks later where we evacuated the entire graduation ceremony with a student with a firearm. And Sergeant Crosby was there for both of those. Let's talk about some of the relationships he built with the kids.
Yeah, it's a great question. You know, when I think of that, I think of, you know, having spent in time on a campus. I think what it highlights is exactly that, it's time. You know, when we're police officers on the street, we're going call to call to call. And the ability to not only be on a campus and spend an extended amount of time, but to have conversations with students is so valuable and important. And that's where the trust is built, right? It's seeing the same students day in and day out. I often said that some of the strongest relationships I had with students were the ones that got in the most trouble. Because those are the ones that you continue to check in on and circle back with. And it wasn't so much, you know, the initial incident of whatever they did, it was the follow-through. It was the follow-up conversations. It was the continuing mentorship that came along with the ability to spend that time with them. And so, you know, being on a campus, you know, talking about anything and everything with these students, that relationship was so strong that I think, you know, they felt comfortable coming to talk to us in a lot of situations. And so we saw that quite often where there was this ability to say, hey, I'm going to go talk to my SRO. I'm going to explain what's going on. Because one, I trust them and more importantly, they can do something about it. And we heard this feedback. And I think that was very powerful in those relationships.
Great, thank you. That's all of my questions.
Thank you, Ms. Benuelos.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to say thank you so much for the report. I really appreciate it. And I want to thank my colleagues that worked on this MOU as well as the trustees, as well as all the stakeholders and everyone that was involved. I'm coming late to this, but I've, obviously I've been following it for years at this point. So with that, I do have a few questions and... So the first one is around the timeframe. So the MOU itself is for three years, right? And it starts on July 1st. Do we have any idea of a timeframe of when this program would actually be implemented? And if that's connected to costs, I have some questions around that too. But yeah.
So at this point, it's all associated with costs of once this MOU today is allowing us to look more proactively at some of the funding sources. So just Assistant City Manager Jason Nutt and I had a meeting with the cops office in Washington DC this morning, just talking about different funding. So that's where we're focused. Once we have an agreement from our city council about we want to move forward with this, then we're going to work toward that. Quite frankly, right now, obviously with the city budget stuff and with the city staffing reduction, we're not going to see one in August of this year. The school board has reached out to me. Would love to see that, especially with the combination of high schools and middle schools being on one. Certainly with our staffing reduction, we won't have the ability to do that. And I don't see it feasible that we'll have funding in time for that place. But we're actively going to pursue state and federal grants and look toward the future about what that looks like and once we secure that funding.
So is the idea that the city would pay for it? Or is it, I know I saw cost sharing and then I saw removed and I just wasn't clear.
That's still, that wasn't an agreement. So the MOU specifically left it as like, we'll further develop that. The, being there by the, in the three-by-three conversations and meeting with other elected officials from our school district, the agreement was, this is going to say, now we can start pursuing some of those outside funding. And both the school district and council, in a perfect world, we find outside funding for it. So we're not using it from the school district funds. We're not using it from the city general fund dollars that we find a federal grant for. The cops office is one that we're pursuing right now. We've had conversations with many other state and federal elected officials too, about what are some of the avenues? Whether we've been very successful as a city with federal earmarks? What are some of those avenues that we could pursue that would be able to launch an SRO program? And at this point, right now, we're still seeking those avenues. We have no guaranteed funding whatsoever.
Yeah, I was concerned because after last week, you know, looking at the possibility of cutting any public safety positions and then trying to add six more. I'm just like, how are we going to, how are we going to do that? And I understand the school board is in the same situation. And, you know, so just trying to figure out how that's supposed to happen. Along that line with costs, I really appreciated in the presentation, you know, the history. But what I didn't see was how it was paid for in the past. I have talked to many former school board members and I'm not talking the last school board. I'm talking 2000s, mid 2000s, you know, old school member, school board members who are still around and talk about how it was paid for before. And that wasn't touched on. And maybe you have an idea?
Yeah, I'm really clear on it with it. So even some unfortunate school board members of the past didn't have a whole lot of clarity on this with it. So the program started in 1996. The Police Department was paying for the one SRO. As it evolved, the school district started contributing 250,000 of the $1 million budget at that time. So they were paying approximately 25% of the cost. In 2008, we all saw across California and really the nation, huge budget deficits. The school district came together and said, we don't have the money to pay the 25%. The Santa Rosa City Council at the time felt that it was extremely important. So they absorbed 100% of the cost from 2008 to when the program lost, left in 2020. We funded that partially at a PSAP from the Public Safety and Prevention Tax, the rest with general fund dollars. So in 2020, we cut the, obviously the funding for the program and those PSAP-funded SRO positions were filled with other things. So we filled that with the downtown enforcement team and with the traffic officer position. So we currently have 17 positions funded in PSAP. But with sagging sales tax, we're looking at eliminating some of those positions. There's definitely no dollars to add to fund an SRO program. And that comes up a lot in the community. So I have to just educate them on the funding has changed not only with sales tax going down, as we're all very clear on, but that we've reallocated that to other areas. So that would have to pull officers out of downtown enforcement, which has already taken a hit with the other budget one. So that'd be a difficult one to do right now.
Thank you. And the last area I was interested in is reporting. I've been doing a lot of research on this. This is an area that I'm very familiar with as the former chair of the Community and Law Enforcement Task Force for the county. So I've done a deep dive on this over the years. And so reporting is a really big factor. And I just saw that it, the way it was worded, it said at a bare minimum, we'll have quarterly reports. Some of the school districts across the state have not done a good job at checking to see what their, our SROs are doing. And it's been documented. And so I'm just wondering what kind of reporting these SROs would be required to do and how often so that whoever ends up paying for it at least has an idea of what, what's being done. Even if it's just, I had an event with the, you know, my school or whatever, whatever it is. It doesn't have to be negative, just reporting in general.
Yeah, and that's something internally we've been really looking at because we want to be able to show what is the activity on the school campus with it. So we have a computer aided dispatching system CAD that we call, call it so that what we're looking is like the officers memorializing those contacts as like through the CAD system like that. So then that way we're able to track them. It was a officer X at this school made whatever it may be hypothetically, 55 contacts this week and we're able to go through. And the reason why the working group we developed every three months with it was to actually have some type of privacy for the students. So instead of it reporting that week and then where students can be, but wait a minute, it said a 13-year-old white girl got arrested for this, well, that's Suzie with it. And we didn't want to do that. So that was having a little bit of the time gap of every quarter was to be able to give a little bit of space and privacy for the students on those school campuses. But still giving in a rather timely manner for community leaders and for parents and teachers[1618.10] manner for community leaders and for parents and teachers to be able to understand what are the arrests, detentions, and stuff being made on those school campuses.
Just one more thing I was thinking about, too, is the, in the training section, there's a piece about implicit bias. So that's another concern that I have, just to be real clear. The experience of students of color is different, it just is. And so I really think that that piece is really important, the training piece. And I know you talked earlier about picking the right officer, and not everyone is suited for it. I totally agree with that, I just want you to know that. But also how important, especially that piece around implicit bias, because in my personal opinion, I think that's where mistakes happen. And I don't, one of the things I don't want to see, especially when I talk with folks who used to be active, people that worked in the school district that knew a lot of the SROs at that time, that sometimes that's where we, they used to have the gang contracts and all those things. Don't want to see that come back necessarily. I know that that's a problem right now. I realize that 2025, we're dealing with a lot of different issues, and we don't really know why students feel the need to bring weapons to school and all of that. And I don't expect SROs to solve that problem or get to the bottom of that. But I think that's part of it. So just, I just wanted to let you know some of my concerns going forward. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I join with you in the concerns about implicit bias. We see that in human nature. And that's something why, even though that's in the training for the SROs, that's something that we value and we have every police officer take. So we actually work collaboratively with a group of community stakeholders across Sonoma County who came together. And so all of our officers, every two years, go through an implicit bias block. And we go through of understanding some of the unconscious bias that we have and how to mitigate that, how to recognize that. And quite frankly, we try to have like open conversations about this, accepting that there is bias in society. And what are you doing to understand maybe some of that implicit bias that may be like seeping into your decision-making? And another key component with your point about the contacts with it, and Sergeant Crosby talked about it, is us really working with school staff about when SROs are introduced to a situation. And it's not proper for an SRO if a student is talking on their cell phone in class with it. That's administrative like that. And so we're really going to work on the education of the school staff and teachers, and we have incredible teachers here in Sonoma County, but to be able to understand like what their role is versus a law enforcement role. And we're there for the safety component, criminal violations, not for administrative tasks. And that's where, when we really studied SRO programs across the nation, that's where some of the issues go, where officers are introduced to handle non-law enforcement functions with it. And that's where I think you see many times the bias intercepted in there.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Thank you. We'll open it up to public comment. Are there any members of the public who'd like to speak in this item? Ms. Carmen?
First, I want to thank Janice Carmen here. I want to thank Caroline Benwellis for her input into this. It was really significant. And a lot of revelation on both sides, and also Chief Krieger. And I'm sorry, I don't remember the name of the other party, but this was really, really good. And it brought out a lot of the intricacies of the psychological interactions between the students, the authority, the police, all of these things that play into it and are very serious and can have very serious and deleterious consequences. So I thank you for what you both have brought to this conversation, and it's really been very good. As for myself, I rally, I love police presence. And I also went to Slater and Montgomery, and we had who we called Miss Nancy. And Miss Nancy showed up at the school. She was, I don't know what, but she belonged with the police department. And she'd walk around and she'd talk to students, and she had a uniform on, and everybody would, you know, recognize Miss Nancy. And that goes back a long time. But I think this sounds really good. But again, it's the question of the money. And in my mind, I was thinking like, how many people can do this? When it does become an effective part of actually being in real time, I would like to see something like maybe two teams. And really, these people be special officers, that they would be more like a lead team, that they got to know by name, that they were people that you could go to, would be responsible. And I'm thinking of like 12, like two six-person teams, and I know that would cost a lot of money. But it could be two, three-person teams. But I'm just thinking that something like that where it's, and the other part, I'm thinking like athletics, like a tag team, you know? And they could, they could also be for the other person if somebody was absent or if someone was hurt or something. And I just think it would help to create more of a sense of inclusiveness with students as they mature and go, you know, through their matriculation with the school system. But I'm really glad I'm here today. It was a really great presentation and full of information. And the MOU sounds like it's really fantastic, and I support it.
Thank you, Janice. Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak? Ms. Diaz?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Attorney. Hi, my name's Diana Diaz, and I am from Roslyn. After 15 months of, you know, finally settling the MOU, I want to thank the three city council members for their dedication and obviously their time to this. I think it was very valuable. And Diana, thank you so much for your advocacy towards this as well. I do want to reflect upon my own personal experiences with law enforcement, especially living in a low-income area with violence that was off the map when I was growing up, and express that. We had SROs, and I never experienced anyone ever getting arrested. Chief Krieger, you've done an amazing job at hiring so many people of color. I've never, I'm born and raised here in Santa Rosa, and I've never seen such a drastic change like this. And the temporary SROs that you assigned to this task, I mean, that was as diverse as we could get. So I truly am confident in whatever's going forward with SROs being on campuses. I really do think that it would be more of a prevention for students to bring weapons and just violence in general onto our campuses. Going with that, as my experience growing up in Roslyn, I could obviously say this with pride of my past and who I am today, that I think I'm probably, in this room, I've probably been incarcerated longer than most people here. And, you know, we just need to find a balance, and we need to meet each other halfway on learning how to collaborate with each other as a community and as law enforcement. Because if we don't see that change within ourselves, that continued indifference and separation will always continue. So we need to be the change. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Anna. Any other members of the public wish to speak? All right, I'll bring it back to council for any final comments and a motion by Ms. Rogers. Ms. Benwellis?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, I'm going to vote for this, but I just want to say that I am very, very concerned about the funding. That's, that's the thing that's bothering me about this MOU, because most MOUs usually define where the funding's going to come from. And I'm not, not any disrespect to those who worked on this, because I'm sure that there was an attempt to figure that out. But it does bother me just because of what we went through last week. I keep thinking to myself, okay, now we're going to, it's not, we're not voting on this today. But so what I'm hoping, and I'll say this to my fellow council members, is that when the funding is discovered, or if the council is given some opportunities to come with some, up with some ideas of where funding can come from, because I think there are other ways to fund it. Again, looking at what other school districts are doing across the state, they've come up with some really innovative ways to pay for, for this. I think that that's something that I would, I would feel more comfortable with. But in the meantime, like I said, I, I feel, and I'm from Los Angeles, let me just say that. I grew up in a gang-infested environment, and I have a very close relative who was a gang member, so, and was shot in the head. So, so I have a different perspective than most folks, and I realize that. And that's what I bring to this. And so I will vote for it. I'm not completely comfortable with it, but I also am very concerned about the funding. So I'll just say that.
Thank you. Ms. McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I appreciate all the work on this and that the SRO program is one component to make sure that the children and the staff are safe on campus, that we know that this isn't the only thing that's going to make sure that our school campuses are safe. But this is the one thing that the city of Santa Rosa can do to support those efforts. And with the work that went in from the Safe Campus Alliance, the parents that have reached out to us on their concerns, I just want to validate that we appreciate all the feedback from the community on this issue. I have been in favor of the SRO program, I've made that known. So I'll be voting to support this MOU. I will just echo my colleagues' concern around the finance. I will share that the things that I've seen in the past as a shared responsibility, as a former trustee, where the school district shared that with the city. So I'm hopeful as this comes forward that we'll be able to have those discussions.
Thank you, Mr. Ocrepki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important to give a little bit of context on this discussion, just for the fact that, you know, this has been a year and a half in the making, and we are now on our third superintendent. We've been working with the Santa Rosa City Schools with the interim superintendent. We're going to be on our fourth as we move forward. That's why financing hasn't been discussed at this point, is because we haven't had consistency of leadership at the Santa Rosa City Schools level in order to discuss long-term finance as this goes forward. I will say that this is, that subject has been addressed by both sides, that it is a concern. But the main concern of the body going forward with this MOU was to understand the responsibilities, understand any restrictions, any freedoms that the SROs may or may not have, and basically what it means to have an SRO on campus as a concept, not as an actual program yet, but as a concept, what does it mean to have an SRO on campus, and how are they going to operate? It has nothing to do with, it had nothing to do with financing. We didn't discuss financing at all as we discussed, as we went through this MOU process, because we all knew what the scenarios were. We all knew that the leadership of the administrative staff turned over a couple of times. So that was, that's why that wasn't done, and that's why it hasn't been discussed, that's why it's not coming forward. And so I think it's important to have that context when we discuss this item.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Alvarez?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, you stated that not officer, not all officers are made for, for school resource officers, SROs. But I have to tell you that after speaking with Matt, many of times, Officer Crosby, many of times, he's definitely the man for the job. And I'd love to see that he's in the chair alongside of you. When he speaks of the children, of the students that he's encountered, mentored, how they've approached him when we've been out in public, it's, it's, I, I'm able to believe in the system. And I think originally when this first came before me, I was not a supporter. You know, I kept thinking, you know, school to prison, I'm thinking of my own personal biases. And but I don't have a better answer. You know, and when I hear the children up there on that podium crying and saying that they're scared to go to school, something must be done. So with that, definitely move forward. But I definitely want to congratulate you with the gentleman that you have at the helm. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I'll echo my colleagues. And I will underline a connection between what we're discussing here with the MOU and what we discussed last week with the budget issues. It's going to be difficult for the city of Santa Rosa and for the county generally to be economically robust if its school systems, whether in the city or throughout the county, stay in the shape that they're in. My colleagues are entirely correct, and Chief Krieger and Officer Crosby, you acknowledge this as well. This is a tiny part of the larger set of issues that confront our school systems in the county. But it's, it's a way that the city can contribute, especially to our local school system, to provide some security that the school systems themselves are not well-equipped to provide. And if that gets us a little closer to having excellent public schools, then that gets us closer also to being able to attract businesses here, to encouraging families and students to remaining in the city and in the county, with all of the economic benefits that result from that, to say nothing of the moral and lifestyle quality benefits and long, and future success benefits that come to students and families. So I do think that there is very much, that the city very much has a stake in this discussion. And I applaud, again, you, Chief Krieger, Officer Crosby, the members of the three-by-three here on the council, our city manager, for the work that you have done to get us to this point. And I'm looking forward to seeing what comes of the investigations that our city manager and executive staff can have to see what our options are to push something forward. Because again, if we're looking to, to bring companies here, to keep employees here, to make our city economically robust, we've got to, we've got to have stronger school systems. And so, again, maybe this is a tiny step forward. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Rogers.
Thank you. I'd also like to add that the three-by-three, we have to make sure that the Santa Rosa City Schools were actually going to approve an MOU before we could even look at funding. Not only has their leadership changed as far as their superintendent, but their board has had quite a drastic changeover as far as the people that are currently on the board and their thought process around SROs. So that was something that we just, we needed to deal with, to make sure that we got the logistical part of it worked out about what were SROs and how we saw them in the community and how we saw them at the school with a lot of community input. And I think that that was great that we, 15 months is a long time, but that we had the opportunity to do that, because everyone felt heard, knew they were heard. And although everyone was not on board or at the same place, we could all agree that our children are important and their safety is very important. So after 15 months of collaboration with Santa Rosa School Board, school administrators, and dedicated community members, I'm proud to share that we have reached an agreement that lays the groundwork to one day welcome an improved school resource officer program back to our campuses. SROs, for me, play a vital role in building trust between students and law enforcement, ensuring safer learning environments, and providing critical support in times of need. With the right structure, oversight, and community input, an improved SRO program can reflect the values and needs of our students, families, and communities. This milestone would not have been possible without the tireless work of the partnership of the three-by-three. What a special thank you to Councilmember McDonald, Councilmember Ocrepki, Sergeant Crosby, Chief Krieger, and Madam City Manager. I know worked behind the scenes so much. The same with you, too. So the three-by-three could not see a way to move forward. You guys really took it to the next level, and that is why we are here today. So thank you for working with the working group in order to make that happen. Today, I feel like we're taking the next step to making our schools and our community safer. So thank you. And I would like to move resolution of the council of the city of Santa Rosa approving an agreement for school resource officers between the city of Santa Rosa and the, and Santa Rosa City Schools District to relaunch the school resource officer program and delegating authority to the city manager to execute that agreement in way for the reading of the text.
Thank you.
We have a motion, we have a second by Vice Mayor Alvarez, Madam City Attorney?
I just want to clarify that it's the resolution that has been revised that staff is recommending today that you are moving forward. Is that correct?
Yes.
And just to confirm, the second is, is with that clarification?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Ocrepki.
Aye.
Councilmember McDonald.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Benwellis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Alvarez.
Aye.
Mayor, stop.
Aye.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you. We have no written, or there are written communications listed. We have no additional, oh, we have, I'm sorry, we have one final public comment on non-agenda matters, item 18. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on any items not listed on the agenda? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.